Are you there Ed?
Hey, hey, how are you Aaron?
Okay, how are you doing?
Pretty good. I come in peace by the way guys. Uh, but I- but I- I would like to handle the thing though in a more intelligent manner though than just, you know... Uh, yeah, I don't want to- you know, I don't have anything to do- I don't want to have anything to do with, uh, emotion, just- just rational thinking, you know? To start with, I'm a white person, definitely, de- no doubt about it. Um, I don't have any animosities towards any other race, but I do love my race more than I do other races. Just like all races should love their own race like they lo- that- and not love the other races as much. Not that they have to hate the other races because the word racism does not include the word hate. It only includes the- the- the love of your race. That's what ra- racist means. And- but, uh, the- the word racist to start with, I don't know if, uh, Gus has done his research on this, but the word racist, uh, was not in the eighteen twenty-eight Noah Webster's Dictionary of the American and English Language to start with. Second of all, it didn't start until it says here, I was li- reading a- an article here, it says, "The term racist has been around since nineteen thirty-six. The concept has been in the English language since nineteen oh-seven," which was way after the Civil War to start with. "It appears that the conflict between Hitler's Germany and the Jewish culture was the catalyst for the predominance of the term racist." So, the word racist actually started with the Jewish culture. So, we're talking about a term that really the Jews invented. And it goes on to say, I say Jewish culture because there are three different racial groupings within the Jewish community. Hebrews, mixed breed Hebrew, and non-H Hebrews. This is an established fact within the Jewish community and in their written records, including the scriptures, Torah. It was considered to be a problem in Jewish society to have other races or Gentiles in one's bloodline. So, there's where the word da- uh, racism came from. And the nineteen thirty-six definition of racism, uh, I see, I don't know if that was Noah Webster's, probably was Noah Webster's. Uh, anyway, it's the definition of nineteen thirty-six was, "I believe that race is the primary dominant of human traits and capacities, and that racial differences produce an inherent superiority of a particular race. Two, racial prejudice or discrimination are racist." The- the second definition of course is not the best definition, the first one is the best, the first one that I read. So, we're- we're- first of all, we need to have a complete understanding of what racism is. You know, racism is not necessarily- does not mean that you hate all other races. Just if you're- if you're a racist, you don't hate everybody. Aaron, do you hate all the other races, uh, because you happen not to be white, for example, or do you hate the white race?
There are no ra- there are no races Ed, and I think you know that.
What do you mean there's no races?
If there- if us humans can procreate and obviously fornicate, then how different are we?
Well, obviously, we have differences. I mean, everybody's different. I mean, even between the same ro- uh, stock- same stock of persons. It- they're- they're different. I mean, a woman and a man is different. Uh, two men are the- are different. Uh, ask the police department if they're not different and they take their- everybody's different in their own way. But what I'm talking about is within a certain stock of groups, they are different from other stocks of people. And- and- and the proof of that is, is that when you go down to say give blood, for example, uh, it is- there's a certain type of blood that is predominant within a certain stock of people. Uh, and that same type of blood is not the same as another stock. The other stock of person is different. Obviously, that's true because if you take- if I- if you were to take the blood of another person that is different from your blood, then you're- then it could harm you. It would not be, uh, compatible with your- your, uh, blood. So, there is a difference. But I just wanted to clear up the idea though that racial- racist- racism is not- does not necessarily mean that you hate everybody. If you hate everybody, you hate everybody. That's a different term. That would be a different term. You're a hater. But you're not a racial- you're not racial, I mean, you're not a racist, uh-
Mr. Berg, may I interject? Now, I would ask someone like Ed, since he said he loves his race. He said he's a white person. So, he loves white people more than the people who are not white. Now, what is your basis for this cohesion with other white people? What is the basis on which you make this distinction from your quote-unquote "race," white people, and other non-white people? Can you share that with us Ed?
Okay. Yes, absolutely, absolutely. And you can share the- and you would- you'll agree with what I say. Every- every stock-
Don't put words in my mouth Ed.
Every stock of person, and I'm talking about every race because what's- the stock is the proper word, not race. Every stock of persons on this planet, if you're, uh, full-blood, that is, you know, if you're full-blood of the stock, you are going to, uh, be more- you're gonna lean more towards that stock of person because the fact that your culture, your inheritance, your language, and your customs are more like each other rather than the other stocks of persons. That's simple.
So, what is it that you think? I- I just want to get clarification. What is it that you believe you have in common, more so, with other individuals who classify themselves as white? What is it that you have more in common with them than all of the other people on the planet that you say are not white? Specifically, like things that you do?
Just like, I- I- I just told you, my culture, our culture, our heritage, our-
Specific, let's get specific. What are specific things about your quote-unquote "culture" and heritage and all that? Specific things that you do that you have in common more so with white people than anybody else on the planet? Let's hear them. Let's name them and be specific.
Okay. History- history will recount in- in all history that each group of people, each stock of persons, or race if you will, of persons, has a different, uh, type of culture. Like, for example, the white folks have always had, for example, the same language, English, or it comes from the same language.
That is not true Ed. You're not being truthful Ed. There are white people on the planet and do not speak English. You're- now, listeners, you can conclude for yourself.
I understand that. I know that. I know that.
I'm asserting that Ed is not being truthful because there are individuals who are classified and accepted as white who do not speak English. Some of them speak French, some of them speak Spanish, some of them speak, uh- Uh, that is not true Ed. That's- go ahead. Is there- is there anything else?
Yeah, they- they come from Hebrew. They come from Hebrew. That's one. That's one.
Is there anything else, Ed? Does you all have in common? Is there anything else? Language, what else?
That's one. Yes. Uh, white folks have- have always, uh, had certain customs. And that is, uh, the Anglo-Saxon common law is the custom of- of the white folks. They've always followed the same customs when it comes to law, for example. They believe that everybody- they- they believe in absolute and true justice for all. And so, that's always been a- a custom, but that's not necessarily the custom of, for example, the, uh, Asian folks, or Jewish folks, or even the black folks. They've not always drawn that way if you go back to-
Are you saying that the only people who have a- wait a minute, I just want to make sure I'm hearing you correctly. Are you saying that white people, you said Anglo, white people, Anglo, are the- you all have in common, something that is different from everybody else who is not white, is a history of the belief and the practice of justice? Is that what you're saying?
Absolutely. No doubt about it.
Wow. That is fascinating. I don't even have to say anything on that one. If you're non-white and you're listening, wow. Let's hear some more. What else do you have in common Ed?
Well, history proves that. I mean, if you- even today, if you go to the Asian countries, or you go even to Africa, go to Africa. My God, they're- they're- they treat each other like stepchildren. It- their own race, they treat each other that way. And that's not justice. White folks have a history, if you follow the history, of following the- the true justice, or the- the scriptural justice. The- the Ten Commandments, for example. They- they have a- a history of that. Just follow it back and you'll see that.
Of being fair, wouldn't you say Ed? Uh, that white people have a history of being fair. Is that true?
Well, being fair and- and justice are two different things. Being fair just means, uh, what- what is needed for the moment. But- but being ju- just, being just means treating an issue with justice regardless of whether it's fair or not. For example, if a person- if a person, uh, m- if a person goes and murders somebody, for example, then white justice would say that he needs to be put to death. That's not necessarily fair because it deprives him of his life. But it is just because we don't- we do not want him running around in society killing somebody else. So, that's an example. There's a lot of other examples. But- but if you look at the cultures of the other race of people, they do not have the same type of culture. That's- that's- that's a self-evident thing. I mean, you don't have to look very far to see that.
Hmm. Fascinating. Fascinating.
So, that's the reason why cu- that's why, for example, that each group of pe- people, whether they're black, Asian, white, or whatever, there's only three races anyway. There's only white, black, and Asian. Those are the only three races. The other races are mixed races. And they all have a certain culture, and you can read about their culture and it's totally different. Look at the difference between Asian culture even today and white culture. Completely different. I mean, there's no- there's no similarities at all. So, the- so, the ability for an Asian person to be able to get along with a white person is- is- probably get along with it, but you're not really gonna understand one another totally, ever, because you have a different culture. Your culture is bred into your genes. When you- when you're- when you are born, your culture's born in whether you know it or not because there's things about your culture that go way back in history that will come forward in your life. And you may not know where it came from, but it will- it will come forward, you know? If you- if you- and at times, you don't even understand where it came from, you know? For example, your- the de- the deja vu, you know, deja vu, a lot of people don't understand that deja vu is actually a recorded history, a recorded, um, happening in- in some other of your ancestors that has occurred in you because it was passed on to you in your genes, in the memory part of your genes. So, uh, those things come forward. There's no doubt about that. You see it everywhere. You can see it today. You walk down the street, you see it. So, it's not- it- the- the reason for the loving- and- and let me go a step further. As far as the racism is concerned, I saw a program, uh, it was, uh, the Phil Don- no, not Phil Donahue, it was, uh, Martin Downey Show where a black professor, now, he was a long-time professor, he was probably in his sixties, and he came on the program to prove that all people are racist. And he actually proved it i- in an experiment on the program. And- and what he did was this. Here's what he did. He got- he took everybody from the audience, anybody that wanted to volunteer, and there was white, Asian, and all kinds of people out in the- in the- that volunteered, and he took about ten people and put them in a line. And he said, "Okay, now," he says, "here's the scenario." He says, "You've just broken down in your car on the highway, and you know what- what's broken down is gonna take a long time to have it fixed, maybe weeks to have it fixed, a couple of weeks maybe." And he said, "Now, you've got- you're way out away from civilization, there are two houses that you can walk to to get help." And he said, "One house is a white family and the other house is a black family." And he says, "Now, I want- I'm gonna- I'm gonna put two guys down here in the front row here, a black man and a white man, representing the white family and the black family, and I want each of you in this line, one at a time, to walk to the house that you would feel more comfortable going to if you knew you had the safe or a time to get your car fixed." And they all walked to the one that was of their own race, except for a few that hesitated, and he goes, "Uh-uh." He goes, "You hesitated. You- you were going to go to your- to the- your racial kind." He says, "And so, the fact is that all people are racist. There's no doubt about that." And- and to be a racist is not a bad thing because you want to love and you're free-
Okay. Well, wait a minute, wait a minute. I'd like to respond. You're not the guest. I would like to respond. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Context of white supremacy. Justice, Gus T. Renegade, in for another broadcast. Hopefully, to share constructive information on the system of white supremacy racism. Today's date is Friday, May eighteenth, two thousand twelve, so I have been told. Uh, we will begin, uh, this is the second installment, uh, weekly study session on Yorugu. Uh, Dr. Marimba- Marimba Ani's phenomenal text. "Yorugu: An African-Centered Critique of European Cultural Thought and Behavior." Uh, this is the second session. Uh, we're doing pages fifty through one hundred. Uh, if you haven't been reading, shouldn't be too difficult to catch up. We haven't got very far in the book. Uh, we will do segment number three next Friday, same time, eight PM Eastern, five PM Pacific. Uh, we'll do one hundred through one fifty, and I think next Friday, that might be the last time that we do fifty pages. Uh, see if we can increase the page count a little bit. Not too much, but as I said last week when we did the first session, I think about the first hundred pages or so, maybe first hundred fifty. It's kinda like when you're riding a bicycle and you're riding uphill and it's kinda tough and you have to work. Not the easiest thing, especially if it's a steep hill, kind of a steep, long hill. But I think we are about at the summit. I think with this book, because she is presenting new definitions, uh, she's making up her own terms, making up her own definitions, uh, and she is challenging the white chip that we all have. I think that's a major, uh, assertion that she makes in the book. Uh, and I think she makes in some- many of her lectures as well, that because we are on the plantation, planet dominated by white supremacy, black people, non-white people, we have been infected with the racist worldview, the racist Udomowazo, as she used the term in the book. That's the way that we think. We think the same way that white people do. So, for a lot of us, uh, it will be challenging. It will challenge our white chip to read something like this. I hadn't even thought of that before, but I think that also may account for some of the difficulty that people have encountered in reading this work and probably all of the other works that have been written about racism, white supremacy. Uh, our brain computer, uh, it's like we have that virus. That white chip is like a virus in our brain computer. And so, reading this sort of information, uh, goes counter to the way that we've been trained to think. So, I suspect that'll be interfering, uh, with our ability to accurately comprehend what Dr. Idi is saying in the book. At any rate, I'm hoping that it will get easier. I'm hoping that, as I said, we're at the summit of the hill and we can start to coast a little bit. That was the experience that I had the first time around when I read this book, and I was a lot more confused then about racism, white supremacy. Once I got past the first, I'll say, hundred, hundred fifty pages, uh, you will start to get a lot more comfortable. She's basically spent the entire first chapter, and we're pretty much at the end of chapter one. Uh, if you've read the first hundred pages, you pretty much read, uh, the entire introduction and all of chapter one. I think chapter one goes to page one oh eight. So, pretty much, you've read, uh, the first chapter of the book. Once you've got a chapter or two under your belt, you should be a lot more comfortable. She's taken that whole first chapter to go into great detail about what she terms the Udomowazo. The white way of thinking, and the title is "The Cultural Structuring of Thought." The European- I just use the term white, or white supremacist, the white supremacist structure of thought. That's pretty much the whole first chapter. I'm confident, uh, she would say, "Absolutely Gus, that's exactly what it is." Um, so hopefully, people will get more comfortable. I'll be curious to hear from folks, listeners, who've been reading along with us, if that has been the case, uh, if you've been reading, if you're feeling a little bit better about the terms, the Asili, the Udomorojo, what those terms mean, how you can apply them, and seeing them. Uh, before we hop into the book, read a few sections. I'll give out the number, uh, for folks to dial in. Again, this is not supposed to be, uh, Gus just running off at the mouth and reading sections from the book. Uh, we are hoping to hear from people who have been reading. I hope listeners out there have had this book. Uh, if you are serious about being on your counter racist grind, this is a definite book you wanna have in your library. I know all about being, uh, having poor finances, uh, not having the ability to make a lot of book purchases. If you can't afford to have your own copy of the book, definitely make an effort to get it to the library. Uh, if you have any friends or what have you, and they look to purchase you gifts, you can get a wish list at Amazon. See if you can get a used copy, uh, even just go to the library. As I said, the first time I read this book, I just went to the library and read it there. Definitely something that you wanna run your eyeballs over. Phenomenal read, great information. Will really help you clear up a lot of confusion about what it means to be a white person. So, the number, seven six zero five six nine seven six seven six, and the code is five six four nine four three pound. Number again, seven six zero five six nine seven six seven six, and the code is five six four nine four three pound. Uh, before we begin, the sound clip that we started off with, uh, that was- that was, uh, from our broadcast, uh, this week on Tuesday. Uh, Gus was a guest on Mr. Aaron Berg's program, Reality Unknown, right here at, uh, Talk Shoe Tuesday, uh, Tuesday evening. It's in the- we simulcast it, so it's in the archives here at the cows as well. But, uh, yeah, that was from Tuesday. One of the callers, uh, his name, or he said his name, was Ed. Mr. Ed, I got a little chuckle out of that myself. If, uh, if you don't watch enough television, that'll go right over your head, but I think I did reference him as Mr. Ed on the program. Anywho, um, Mr. Ed calls in. He said he's a white person, and, you know, you- you got to hear a lot of what he had to share on the broadcast. Uh, I think I said, even though I didn't play it in the sound clip, uh, oh, Mr. Berg is with us in the chat room. Good to hear- uh, good to see you, Mr. Berg. I hope, uh, you didn't get any death threats or any additional harm as a result of the program. Uh, but when I was listening, I had already started to read, uh, some of the first, uh, few pages from the section that we're looking at today, and I just said, "Wow, Ed is laying it down like Dr. Marimba Ani." We're just like, "See, that is exactly what I'm saying. That is the, uh, that is the European Udomowazo on display." I mean, he is bang, 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 laying it right down for you. Um, he- even when he came on at the very beginning, he said, "I'm just trying to be rational here, not about being emotional. I- I just wanna be rational and- and clear some things up." Uh, I'm just, bang. I was like, "That's the first couple of pages about what we're gonna talk about today." And then, as it, uh, as he continued, uh, "It's nothing incorrect about being racial. It's universal." Bang, right in the chapter we're gonna talk about today. Uh, "Everybody is racial, uh, and there's nothing incorrect about that, but I just have more love for white people. I love my race. Uh, we have more things in common, that culture, even things that you might not be consciously aware of." I mean, whoo. If the- again, I- I assert, if Dr. Ani were to hear that, man, she would be said, "That is exactly what I'm saying in Yorugu." Ed, phenomenal illustration. If anyone, if you read these fifty pages, uh, when we get to the phone lines, you can let us know how well Ed, uh, I'm being told his last name is Allen, Ed Allen, suspected racist, how well what he had to say in that about thirteen-minute clip, how well that matches up with what we're gonna talk about in Yorugu. Moving forward, I will give out our disclaimer before I get to, uh, read it a little bit. And again, encouraging folks to dial in, uh, to participate. This is not supposed to be Gus running off at the mouth. I definitely want to hear from folks. If you've been reading and aspects are not clear, definitely dial in. Uh, we have folks, other people who've been listening and reading the book, so maybe they can add some clarity, uh, we can talk about it. Uh, if things stood out to you that helped you get a better understanding of white people, or just things that you think people should- should think about, dial in. I definitely want to hear from folks. Um, three oh four, uh, listener in Japan, if you, uh, wanna participate, I can give you a call as well. Um, one of the first things that I want to read, I'm actually going out of order. Uh, I'm- I'm gonna read this first just to, uh, get it out. It has been an unpleasant week, uh, which is always the case on the plantation, very unpleasant week. Uh, again, I'm not in the best of spirits, which is, you know, par for the course, uh, under racism, white supremacy. That said, the bar should be pretty high in terms of Gus being able to explain, uh, the sections of this book, really, the whole book. Gus should be able to do at least an average job at explaining this, even if I'm not having a good day on the plantation, because this is not my first time reading this book. Uh, for anyone, if it is your first time, I can understand. If it is, uh, confusing, difficult to grasp, as I said, this book is probably very upsetting to the white chip. If you're white identified, this book is probably very disturbing. She's also, as I said, she's making up terms. I know that can be something that's a little difficult to grasp when people are making up brand-new words, new definitions to kinda get a hold of it. So, I think white people, they've come up with what they call, uh, the Flesh Kincaid, uh, Reading Accessibility Test, where they can measure how difficult or how easy, uh, particular, uh, text is in terms of ability or ease to comprehend and read. And I think this book would probably be pretty difficult on that scale, uh, in terms of sentence length, uh, multi-syllabic words. Uh, this is not quite, uh, you know, elementary or even high school reading level. This is definitely college reading level material. So, I can understand if people have some difficulty, particularly if you're not accustomed to reading. So, dial in if you have, you know, questions, if something wasn't clear, definitely call in and we'll see if we can talk it through and help out. But again, I will say the bar should, uh, be set pretty high. This is not my first time reading this book. Uh, any book that you're rereading, you should be able to do an adequate job explaining what you've read. So, we will take off. Uh, I'm- as I said, I'm going a little out of order just because, um, I said before, long time on the program, long time ago, um, being in the Pacific Northwest, uh, and being a victim of racism, things are frequently not pleasant. And sometimes, you just have to find a way to, uh, get a smile and get a little enjoyment out of things. So, this is one that brought me a little enjoyment. Uh, I am not a fan of recycling. I have never been a fan of recycling. I make an effort not to recycle on a regular basis because it's insulting to me. Um, I felt this way even when I was more confused about racism. It's insulting to me on so many levels, uh, because I see the total lack of regard that white people s- display for the environment on a daily basis. And then I said, "I felt this way back when, even when I was confused, even when I had quote-unquote 'white friends,' I still felt this way." And I said, "You know, I'm not recycling. I don't even have any, uh, I don't believe that you all are sincere when you talk about this foolishness. Let's save the earth." I really, you- I'm even gonna take a curse word. I felt like smacking the shit out of these Greenpeace people when they come out and they're like, "Give us some money, save the earth. We wanna go save the fo-" Man, look at the way that you treat black people. Am I supposed to believe you're really sincerely trying to go out and do something well with the foot? Get outta here, man. I felt that way when I was confused. So, when I hit this part, uh, in the book, I was just like, "Absolutely, Dr. Ani, tell it like it is." This is on page ninety-one, uh, where she writes, "The objectification of nature is what allows for its exploitation and rape. In other cultures, nature is experienced subjectively, as are other human beings. The European seeks the perfectly rational order, an order that has no place for the natural as irrational, and that is the embodiment of the human nightmare. In majority cultures, there appears to be an intuitive and sophisticated grasp of the implications of the exploitation of nature and the creation of an antagonistic relationship between human and nature. The contemporary ecological discussion is pitifully naive when expressed in terms of quote-unquote "detergence with low phosphates and the recycling of paper. The real implications for ecological sanity touch the deepest beliefs of the European and the philosophical basis of their culture." As Theodore Rosak points out in "Where the Wasteland Ends." "The question is whether it is possible for them to alter their concept of nature and of their relationship to it. Such a change would, of course, imply corresponding changes in the total conceptual apparatus offered by the European worldview and would therefore involve many other aspects of European culture and ideology, which with the concept of nature- European culture and ideology which with the concept of nature interrelates. The aceli of the culture would change. The culture would cease to exist as it is now known. It would be different. It would be a different set with different members." And I'm just reminding folks, uh, in case you didn't read the first fifty pages or weren't with us last week, she strongly asserts, uh, the aceli, the white supremacist European aceli, which is the seed that produces, if you want to think about it, the essence, the DNA of what produces white thoughts, speech, action, everything that they do, everything about white people. It is impossible for the aceli to change. Uh, the example that I gave last week, if you want to think about it, uh, if the aceli is the seed, if you have apple seeds and you plant that apple seed, you're going to get apples. That's what it's supposed to produce, that's what it is designed to produce. You're not going to come back and get pumpkins or spinach or pears or lemons or automobiles, apples. The racist aceli is supposed to produce racist thought, racist behavior, racist speech. That's all it ever has produced, that's all it ever will produce. It is not going to change. Very important point. Continuing, Willie Abraham in The Mind of Africa suggests that there are two main views of human nature. There are the essentialist view and the scientific view. These two views help to provide the philosophical and ideological basis of two correspondingly different types of culture. The essentialist view is that there is a constant element in man which is irreducible and is the essence of being a man. African civilization, Abraham believes, is essentialist in inspiration. In the scientific view, human nature can be altered, the human can be resolved into elements, and it is possible to predict and control human reaction. The scientific view depends on analysis, disintegration, and then control of selected variables. In this view, it is possible to analyze human material into elements and then rearrange them according to a desired dominant principle. What are the implications of these distinctions for the construction of cultural models? Abraham characterizes European culture as rationalistic, scientific, and a conculture, which he says is pragmatic, pragme, uh, excuse me, paradigmatic for African civilization as metaphysical, essentialist. Humanism in European discourse is usually assumed to represent the highest and most politically disinterested or universal, uh, universalistic approach to the human. In reality, humanism has generally implied the typically European deification of the rational and the ascent of the human being to supremacy in the universe by virtue of his or her rational faculties. And this intercultural implications, excuse me, it is the intercultural implications, this line of reasoning that has become politically significant. Abraham says, "The essence of humanism consists in the replacement of God, the Creator, with man, the Creator. Culture in the age of enlightenment meant cultivation of the reason. The idea underlying rational humanism is a rational one. It was already involved in Aristotle's account of man as a rational animal and the democratic political theory which he based on this idea. The idea is that we cannot think it accidental that we possess reason. To humans, this is a defining characteristic. This is what should be meant by calling reason a capacity or a faculty or a disposition rather than a sequence of episodic acts." I will stop there, she goes on a bit, but just in my view, very important, uh, white people terrorize, dominate, they look to control everyone, everything. The dolphins, the, oh, she can look at what happened in BP if you want, I think they have a whole, uh, science or field, what they call environmental racism. Uh, where white people will go and mess up areas, mess up the forest, mess up the water just so that will in turn, not only have you messed up the earth and the environment, you've also going to negatively impact the non-white people in that area. If you go and you mess up the water in that area, now the non-white people who live there, they can't fish, they can't get water to drink. Some of the animals that they might live off of, they're drinking that water as well. So, they've been contaminated, poisoned. Uh, white, I mean, that's just the way they get down. Everything here, they are not in balance with anything but the practice of white supremacy. That is their sole purpose, that is what the aceli is supposed to produce. Uh, they are at war with nature, people, everybody, the Creator, at war with everyone, everything. Uh, and I think one of the great things, I was listening to, uh, Dr. Inee's lecture, uh, and again, folks, it's online, I think S dot, he said that last week, she has a lecture online, it's about two hours, I think it's on YouTube, the whole thing uninterrupted, you can listen to it on YouTube, where she's talking about Yorugu. And she, uh, it's a great, I guess, study companion, you might want to call it. Uh, if you're reading, if you're reading, uh, the book as we go along and you kind of want to refer to that, to, to hear her, to hear the author break it down, what she's saying, I think it will go a long way to helping you, uh, grasp and overstand what she's saying. But, uh, yeah, just very, one of the things that, that stuck out for me, um, just understanding that white people are destructive. Uh, when I spoke with Mr. Fuller this week, he was saying that white people, they build stuff up to tear it down. Uh, we always say white people are dangerous, they are dangerous, they are destructive. As Mr. Nero says, "White people kill for fun. They kill all forms of life, people, plants, animals, buffalo, whatever. They kill for fun." When you have that as a dominant aspect of a group of people, if they're just around other white people, they will tend to be self-destructive and you see that, that's a major part of their history. And Dr. Inee, she talks about that in this lecture and saying that white people in order to not be self-destructive and just be brutalizing and terrorizing other white people, they had to find a way to organize their behavior and their destructive tendencies to be directed at other folks, i.e. black people, non-white people, and the dolphins, plants, animals, the whole nine, everything. All right, now we'll go back and start at kind of the beginning of this section, uh, fifty through one hundred. As I said, I was, I was reading from, uh, pages, the beginning of that was on ninety-one and it went over to ninety-three, so I'm going back so I can be kind of in order with things. Again, this chapter is, chapter one, uh, Udomowazo, the cultural, the cultural structuring of thought, where she really goes in detail to talk about, um, what the white, she uses the term European worldview is all about. Um, excuse me, I think, and she does a great job of giving examples, illustration of how this has evolved to fit their need for total domination of the universe. Uh, and talking about how some of the most revered thinkers, Plato, she spends a lot of time talking about Plato, uh, Aristotle, some of these other major thinkers, Nietzsche, all of these folks, what they're saying, it gives white people the ideology, the way of thinking. We always talk about thought, speech, and action. They give white people a framework, an intellectual framework that will justify how you need to think in order to get things done and what needs doing, white supremacy, terrorizing non-white people often, and I would even say the justification, this is why we should be doing this. Right? A lot of that, I think, comes out in this chapter. I'll read a little bit and, uh, I'll double check, I do see some hands up and what have you, so we can get to the phone line. I'll read a few segments that I thought really, uh, give out excellent info about what she's talking about in terms of just getting an overstanding of the, the Udomowazo, the white way of thinking, the racist way of thinking. And I think also one of the big points that she has in this chapter is that unfortunately, and she really touches on this in that lecture as well, that we have been contaminated with that way of thinking. We don't know that there's a different way that you could think about the world. You could think about the Creator, we could think about our lives, how things should function on the planet. All we know is that European Udomowazo, the racist way of looking at the world and how things should be structured, and she talks about how that is one of the most debilitating aspects, really one of the best weapons that white people have used is to make their way of thinking universal. I think you heard some of that in the clip at the very beginning with Mr. Ed Allen, racist suspect, making their way of thinking universal as suppo, as though it is supposed to apply to everyone. Everyone should think like us, and if you don't, you are ignorant, backwards, uh, deserving of being mistreated. Okay. This is on, excuse me, I'm turning my pages here, this is on page, starting, I want to go fifty. Okay, this touches on exactly what I just said. This is on page fifty-nine, uh, where she's referencing, this is a black scholar, I hope I'm saying his name correctly, John S. Mbiti, I hope I'm saying it correctly, M B I T I, uh, bottom of fifty-nine. John S. Mbiti, writing from a Eurocentric perspective, has this to say about African religious thought. "So long as their concept of time is two-dimensional with a sasa present and a zamani past, African peoples cannot entertain a glorious hope to which mankind may be destined. Here, African religions and philosophy must admit a defeat. They have supplied no solution. Do religions become universal only when they have been weaned from the cradle of looking towards the zamani, past, and making a breakthrough towards the future with all the mythological promises of redemption? It is in this area that the world religions may hope to conquer African traditional religions and philosophy by adding this new element to the two-dimensional life and thinking of African peoples. Only a three-dimensional religion can hope to last in modern Africa, which is increasingly discovering and adjusting to a third dimension of time." She's quoting Mr. Mbiti's work. This is back to, uh, Dr. Inee speaking. "Sadly, while African himself, Mbiti, strives so hard to take on an alien Udomowazo that he loses sense of African metaphysical conceptions. The African conception of time is not merely profane or ordinary, but also sacred. Indeed, it is the European lineal conception that is one-dimensional. This is one of Mbiti's most obvious errors. Past, present, and future are meaningful only as relationships in a lineal sequence, necessarily unit-dimensional. They do not represent three dimensions. In the African conception, sacred cyclical time gives meaning to ordinary lineal time. The circle, sphere, adds dimensions to the line as it envelops it. The sphere is multi-dimensional and it is curved. Sacred time is not past because it is not part of a lineal construct. The ancestors live in the present and the future lives in us. Sacred time is eternal and therefore it has the ability to join past, present, and future in one space of supreme valuation." This is what, uh, Mercia, I hope I'm saying that correctly, Mercia Elade has called hierophony, rituals that express sacred time, connecting it with ordinary experience and punctuating life, restate and affirm values, beliefs, and symbols, thereby placing daily existence in a meaningful, sacred context. African societies do not need an abstract European concept of the future to give their members hope. The European idea of progress is not a universal statement of meaning. What Mbiti is probably getting at, however, has nothing to do with religion per se, but rather has to do with technology and its place in the society. Indeed, technological success, European style, depends in part on the assimilation of a lineal concept or secular concept of time as the most meaningful or ultimate temporal reality. Friedrich Junger makes this point. He says that for the European, time like the future becomes a force that dominates human life. This is certainly not the spiritually enlightening concept that Mbiti makes it out to be. Time in European society serves the technological order and as such is non-human and mechanical. The cosmic is the enemy of the technological, or so it becomes in the European experience. Junger refers to this mechanical time as dead time and identifies its symbol as the clock. For Newton, time was an absolute, while to others it is a mental construct that relates our experiences and ideas. Newtonian time, says Junger, is linear, uninterrupted, inexorable motion. Neither we nor our experiences affect it. Time in European culture loses its phenomenal character and is instead experienced as absolute and oppressive." Yeah, people quote The Matrix, I was thinking of Morpheus's line when he says, "Time is always against us." And that resonated with me big time when I saw the film the first time feeling that way, like, gosh, I gotta be on the clock, gotta be on time for these white people, gosh, gotta be running, gotta be here, gotta be there. Uh, sorry. Once again, we have a concept created by human beings, reified, then used against them. Within the logic of European development, this process is necessary because mechanical time is a precondition for the triumph or ascend, ascendance of European science and technology. They are the supreme values because they are progress. Several theorists, Junger, Mumford, Joel Koval, who's been on this program, and others have made the connection between the establishment of watchmaking in Geneva in, uh, fifteen eighty-seven with the ascendancy of Calvinism there in the sixteenth century. Calvin intensified the importance of the idea of predestination while preparing people for salvation in heaven. Calvinism trained them for the assembly line production on earth." Uh, I will stop there, I could keep going, she does talk a lot about time and I think this is very important, uh, in my view, that push, I think you will hear a lot of white people talking about the future, we, progress, those are key condip, uh, concepts, uh, development, they talk about that, the undeveloped world and, and talking as if these people are backward, prehistoric. I think some of that even came through in Ed, in the sound clip that he was talking about early. And she spends a, quite a bit of time talking about this, about that push, white people being driven for some unobtainable future. You're always supposed to be doing something, always supposed to be working on something, we're always supposed to be push, 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 pushing for the future. Uh, and in my view, that future is continued dominance on into the future, white terrorism, white supremacy on into the future, which is a totally different way of thinking about time. And I think one of the quotes that I have consistently used on this program that I got from one of my black instructors way back when, she said, "Rhythm helps your time have meaning." It's an acronym, uh, and it spelled, it was to help us, really a mnemonic and an acronym, to help us remember how to spell rhythm. Uh, but I thought, and Dr. Inee, I'm sure could relate to that big time, layers of meaning, where it's not just on the surface, this is rhythm, blah, 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 but layers of meaning and what's being, uh, really coded, uh, and her giving us that little mnemonic to help us remember, um, that there's something different. When black people talk about having rhythm and white people not having rhythm, there's something being expressed beyond just dancing and what you can do, uh, out on the floor. Uh, it is a whole different way of thinking about time and relating to time. I think, uh, I say it consistently, I do not believe in coincidences. Uh, I think things happen, uh, at an exact space and time where they are supposed to happen. Uh, when so many of the different things that have happened on this program, I would even say, Ed, that broadcast happening, uh, just days- say, Ed, that broadcast happening just days before we got ready to do these chapters, and him hitting on so many of the things that she talks about in this segment, I would say, that is an example. I do not believe in coincidences. Time is right and exact. It's not necessarily talking about what they have with Big Ben, and these clocks, and where you gotta be punching a clock, I'm sure a lot of folks out there can relate to that, where you're chasing around and trying not to be late, and running around, and doing all this on a mechanical schedule, where you gotta have a watch on your person, on your clock, on your phone, twenty of them in your house and everywhere else, and just totally robotized with regards to how you live your life, it totally disrupts your natural rhythm to other people, other things, the universe, everything, it really disrupts your ability to be in sync with how you would move through the world. I think things would operate on a totally different schedule, a totally different rhythm, if we were not under racism, white supremacy. Let's see, actually, I'm flipping back one more time, just, there was a really important passage where she states it better than I could, where she's talking about the damage that can happen for non-white people, when we are infected, I'll say it that way, infected with the racist way of thinking. This is... Make sure I have the correct page here. Have all these notes, I took a lot more notes on this chapter, one moment. Okay. This is on page sixty-seven, page sixty-seven, where she writes, "The European definition of science is not the only way of defining what science should be." I would say that is the case for pretty much any term. For Hunter Adams, "Science is the search for unity or wholeness within or without all human experience." And for Wade Nobles, non-white male, "Science is the formal reconstruction or representation of a people's shared set of systematic and cumulative ideas, beliefs, and knowledges, i.e. common sense stemming from their culture. The definition of European science reflects the European consciousness, and the style of thought generated by that consciousness has become ideological. In this role, it is identified as scientism. Nobles warns us, thus, the danger when one adopts uncritically the science and paradigms of another people's reality is that one adopts their consciousness and also limits the arena of one's own awareness." Really important passage, I cannot stress that enough, I will even read that one one more time. Wade Nobles warns us, thus, the danger when one adopts uncritically the science and paradigms of another people's reality is that one adopts their consciousness and also limits the arena of one's own awareness. This is on page sixty-seven, about midway through. Man, that is non-white people worldwide, and I think we've talked about it before, I think that is what is being articulated, when the folks that deactivate the white chip project, when they talk about that white chip, that is what they mean. When you accept racist think, their paradigms for how we should think about the Creator, how we should think about economics, how we should think about how a school should be run, how an academy or university should be operated, what a quote-unquote "family" should look like, all of these concepts that have been programmed by racist man, racist woman, for the benefit of racist man, racist woman, racist child. When you accept that, you end up taking on their worldview, and it totally compromises your ability to function in a logical manner, if you're a non-white person. You really, you end up thinking and operating in a manner that is not in your own best interest. And again, I'll say again, I think that could be a part of the reason that some people have difficulty reading this book, and any other book that's talking about racism, white supremacy, Dr. Welzling's material, Dr. Barudy's material, Mr. Fuller's material, it could be that that white chip is causing some interference, like, "Hey, you're not supposed to be reading this, this is, hey, what are you doing, close this up, this doesn't make sense, these black people are talking crazy." Could be happening when folks read. Let me get some of the, oh, man, yes, very next page, going a little bit more in order now, this is on page sixty-nine, and she has subtitles, again, this is all in chapter one, chapter one, Udomowazo, the cultural structuring of thought. For people, if you were not here last week, if you haven't done the reading, Udomowazo, just the white, she uses the term European, worldview, the way that white people think about the planet, their role in it, how they should be functioning, just the white way of thinking, the white worldview. And she talks in one of the subheadings in this chapter, supremacy of the absolute, the abstract, and the analytical. And you heard, I think, some of this in the sound clip that Ed shared with us, or that Ed giving us his views at the beginning of the program. In fact, I forgot I had two, two different clips that I wanted to read, I'll share this as well. If folks heard John Derbyshire, the white guy, he did the, he wrote that article on the talk, right, he was being racist, real tacky article, he got transferred, not fired, this is a white guy, he wrote this article just a couple weeks back, and talking about things that white people should tell their white children and/or other white people, not, don't hang out with black people, they're dangerous, make sure you're not in the crowd, that sort of thing, really popular. If you don't know what I'm talking about, I can email it to you, what have you, I know a lot of people, they put it on my Facebook page. Anywho, this guy, he was quote-unquote "fired, transferred," and so now he's writing for other people, other white people, and he just had this article, it was posted this week, again, another example, "Time is Right and Exact," just came out in the last seven days, it's on Vdare. I posted it on my Facebook page on like Monday or Tuesday, but it's on Vdare.com, and it's titled, "John Derbyshire: Who Are We, the Dissident Right?" And so he's writing in this report, he gives his whole little breakdown, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, I'm just gonna skip down, okay, here we go, I'm skipping down midway in between. He says, "The enemies of conservatism are eager to supply their own nomenclature. White supremacists seems to be their current favorite. It means maliciously, of course, to bring up images of fire hoses, attack dogs, pick handles, and segregated lunch counters, to imply that conservatives, especially non-mainstream conservatives, are cruel people with dark thoughts. Leaving aside the intended malice, I actually think white supremacy is not bad semantically. White supremacy in the sense of a society in which key decisions are made by white Europeans is one of the better arrangements history has come up with. There have, of course, been some blots on the record, but I don't see how it can be denied that the net-net white Europeans have made a better job of running fair and stable societies than has any other group. Even non-whites acknowledge this, even non-whites acknowledge this in unguarded moments. This Zimbabwean blogger, for example, or the American high school student in this exchange with his teacher." I will stop there, he goes on, just, his whole article basically is justification, white Udomowazo on display, justification, white thinking, the white worldview, and he's just being plain, the only thing that stood out to me is you typically don't see white people being this upfront in, you know, two-oh-one-two, you don't see white people being this explicit, and he's using the term white supremacy, that is, wow, I mean, I rarely see that from folks this day and age, but just in my view, another example of exactly what she's talking about in this text, and that tendency, absolute, that was the chapter I was talking about on page sixty-nine, making things absolute, making things universal, making it seem as though the white way of thinking should apply to everyone, or sometimes they'll just say, "Everyone thinks like this." You've heard countless numbers of people who've come on this program, white people I'm talking about, who have asserted that. It's the white terrorist way of thinking about the world, that's not peculiar to just us, lots of people think that way. I think the white guy, David Livingston Smith, he was on the program in December of 2011, he said that exactly, he wrote this whole book, talking about going out and dehumanizing people, that's what his book is all about, going out, dehumanizing and terrorizing people, and he consistently acknowledged, non-white people have no track record of doing anything like what white people have done. He said that over and over on the program, but then, he would still come back and contradict himself, he's a white person, so you gotta expect that, he would still come back, contradict himself, and say, "Well, I think everybody behaves like this, I think everybody has these tendencies," that universalizing things, they tend to do it with their own behavior, so it makes it look like they are not different, their terroristic racist way of behavior is just like everybody else's, when nothing could be further from the truth, they'll do a lot of it there, but they have that tendency overall. You should think the way we behave the way we do, you should not teach, you shouldn't run your classroom like that, you should run it the way we do, you shouldn't run your banking system that way, you shouldn't run your economic system that way, you shouldn't run your family that way, you should do it the way we do. Which, again, helps them maintain their system of domination, when you can get people you want to dominate to think like you, will be much successful, and you'll have an easier time keeping your foot on these people's necks, which is exactly what white people have done to us. I'll read maybe two more sections, I don't want to take up too much time reading, and then I'll hit the phone lines and see if folks have different things that they want to share, if it's been clear, if it's making sense. Let's see here. Okay, this is, I'm on page, page seventy-six, page seventy-six. "The European worldview has succeeded in leaving the culture with no authentic cosmology, no true metaphysic. Everything is physical, material, and separate. The ultimate approach to knowledge is objectification and analysis." Willie Abraham talks about the European tendency to rip things apart. There are some things, he says, that cannot be divided without destroying their integrity. It would seem that the human would be one of these. The European scientific approach tears human beings to shreds in order to understand them. The essentialist view assumes man-woman to be irreducible. The analytical mode splits things up. Remote and absolute abstraction is made applicable to the here and now through an analytical methodology. What seems to have occurred very early in European development was a predilection for one of the cognitive methods we as human beings were capable of employing. The absolute, the abstract, and the analytical suit the European utumorojo, an utumorojo that needs the sensation of control. Empirical evidence supports this interpretation. As mentioned previously, early on in the history of European scientific thought, language-related skills and methods of knowing were associated with a portion of the brain that was labeled "major," while the portion that generated other types of responses was called "minor," and as indicated by the semantic relationship of these two terms. The minor was thought to be less developed than the major. I'm pausing here just to remind folks, this is why you don't want to use that term "minority" to reference non-white people. Going back, "This was natural or cultural, given the predilection of the European mind for unilinear evolutionary models that allow for the comparison of phenomena on a quote-unquote progressive scale. Later, however, in the nineteen sixties, experimentation on the brain, it was discovered that both hemispheres of the brain, the right and the left, were involved in higher cognitive functions, and that these two halves were not in opposition or antagonistic to one another, as the European worldview would predispose one to think, but that their functions were complementary. Each hemisphere, according to split-brain theory, is fashioned to different modes of thinking, both highly complex. The term "mode" here is very important. It is the kuntu of African philosophy, the manner in which a thing is perceived, apprehended, made intelligible, and expressed. It is the modality, and as such, it affects the contours of what we receive, perceive, and experience. It is media, and therefore has a complex and intimate relationship to communication. The kuntu can do much to determine, limit, portray, distort, or enrich the phenomena being presented. Roger Sperry at the California Institute of Technology has carried out investigations to further the understanding of the bimodal nature of our brains. His work has produced the following information. Number one, that there is a connecting cable of nerve fibers between the two hemispheres of the brain, that when this cable is severed, each hemisphere operates independently, and that each hemisphere perceives its own reality, but that this reality is only partial or incomplete without that of the other hemisphere. The intact brain has a corpus calloso, connecting body, that facilitates communication between the two hemispheres, and so unifies the thinking, feeling, being. The principles expressed are those of an African cosmology in which we have the fundamental twinness of the universe, the complementary functions of opposites that cooperate to form the proper working of the whole, but our notions of what constitutes intelligence have been molded by the minority Western European worldview. And so we have difficulty thinking holistically in this regard, since the European world is predicated on first separation, dichotomization, and then dominance of one of the opposites. The two hemispheres are now known as left and right. The left hemisphere is thought to function in a verbal analytical mode, while the right hemisphere is non-verbal, global, or synthetic, spatial, complex, and intuitive. Clearly, just as the latter was previously known as the minor function, it has consistently and systematically, even one could say institutionally, been devalued in European civilization culture. It is rarely even recognized as being a source of intelligence. It is neither tested for nor encouraged. Intelligence in European society has been identified with the cognitive mode that is generated and controlled by the left hemisphere of the brain. Hunter Adams prefers to talk about cultural styles of knowing rather than splitting the brain in this way. Perhaps the most recent vintage of this Eurocentric view scientifically stated is to be found in the work of Julian James. His theory is that human consciousness as we know it did not begin to develop until the second century before the Christian era. This means that the Great Pyramid of Giza and the calculations involved in its creation, the medicine, mathematics, chemistry, and state the organization of ancient Khemet, Egypt, not to mention Sumeria, were all accomplished without quote-unquote "consciousness." A civilization without consciousness is impossible, excuse me, a civilization without consciousness is possible. James' theory is interesting, and ultimately of the classical Eurocentric white supremacist genre, while on the surface giving the impression of being unique and innovative. It is a new variation on an old theme. For James, consciousness has the following features. Number one, spatialization. Number two, exertion. We only see a part of any particular thing. It is ironic that he should say this, since it is the left-brained European modality that keeps people from comprehending globally. Number three, the analog eye, which allows us to imagine ourselves doing things, i.e. the metaphor me. Of this feature of consciousness, James says, we can both look out from the imagined self, or we can step back a bit and see ourselves. Number four, narratization, from which we are constantly seeing ourselves as the main figures in the stories of our lives. Number five, conciliation, bringing things together as conscious objects. According to James, human beings in ancient times could speak, write, listen, read, learn... According to James, human beings in ancient times could speak, write, listen, read, learn, make decisions, think, and reason, but were not conscious. And she quotes him directly, "Consciousness is an operation rather than a thing, a repository or a function. It operates by way of analogy, by way of constructing an analog space, space with an analog eye that can be obs- that can observe that space and move metaphorically in it. It operates on any reactivity, exerts relevant aspects, narratizes, and conciliates them together in a metaphorical space where such meanings can be manipulated like things in space. Conscious mind is a spatial analog of the world and mental acts are analogues of bodily acts. Consciousness operates only on objectively observable things." Uh, my view on that section, with regards to that dichotomization, it's in the description for the program, I think that is one of the fundamental aspects of white think, racist think. Again, I think you heard some of it in, uh, the sound clip, uh, at the very beginning with Mr. Ed. Uh, and that is, very simply, dividing things up, either-or, dichotomous thinking, very simple. Uh, it's gotta be split up, this or that, white, non-white, uh, developed, non-developed, right? Uh, and I think that is fundamental, I think, once you can, particularly for white people, once you can split things up and you can get two categories, and frequently, white people, they'll divide them up and make even more categories. But once you can kinda divide things up in that manner, bang, one of those groups is gonna be abused, mistreated. That's just the way the European white mind is set up. We want to divide things, we wanna separate, we do not want, as she said, we do not want a holistic view of things that incorporates how I and everyone, we are all connected, we're connected to the planet, we're connected to the universe, everything in the universe, the animals, everything, we're all connected, all of this is a part. Uh, I can see the universe in myself, I can see myself in the universe, I can see the universe in every other thing, all the animals and what have you. White people are totally opposed to that and do not have that way of thinking about things. Very important, and I think most, if not all, of their paradigms and ways of thinking in all areas of activity reflect that. So that you will divide things up, split these different groups up. You heard, uh, Mr. Ed saying at the beginning, even when he was breaking it up and, and you've got different races, you've got the white race, this race over here, you've only got three groups, then he started talking about quote-unquote Jews, and he had to divide those up, we gotta make categories out of those. It's just set up to have conflict. It's set up to have a hierarchy, to have supremacy, where you've got these different groups, and one of the groups is obviously better. It can't just be that you've got, you know, differences and they're all related, or they're different, but also a part of the same, which Dr. Ani talks about as being more in relationship to non-white people, uh, which he calls African people, and just everyone who is not white. She says that in the book. They tend to have a more holistic view that encompasses the universe, the cosmos, and how we're all interconnected. Very different from white people, we're separate, and somebody's gotta be supreme, and it should be us, white people. Fundamental aspect of racist man, racist woman. Um, hmm, I had some other portions. I think this is, uh, just this whole section, I was gonna say chapter, but it's not really the whole chapter one, but the section fifty through a hundred. I think it just, it has so many great bits of information, um, that help you get a grasp on racist man, racist woman. In fact, I'll just, I'll read a little bit of what I just said. This is on eighty-two, where she says, uh, "The African metaphysic, the Native American and Oceanic majority cultures that would be non-white people, it is safe to generalize here, all presuppose a fundamental unity of reality based on the organic interrelatedness of being. All refuse to objectify nature and insist on the essential spirituality of a true cosmos." What became known as the quote-unquote "scientific" view was really the white European view that assumed a reality precluding, uh, psych- psychical or spiritual influence on physical, material being. This view also resulted in the elimination of true metaphysical concept of an authentic cosmology. David Bidney says that Levi Brol exhibited an ethnocentric prejudice in assuming that only the positivistic anti-metaphysical position current in his time was logical as well as scientific, and that metaphysical postulates were a priori prelogical as well as pre-scientific." Uh, in my view, this is just when white people, when they come in being racist, I would just swap out that word. This is not Dr. Ani, she's quoting David Bidney. Uh, I would swap out that word, ethnocentric prejudice, say it's racist, that's what it is, it's white supremacist, it's racist. When white people go in and look and say, "Oh, these people, they're backward, they're primitive, uh, what they're doing is not scientific, it's not valid." You even hear that from Tim Wise, when he broke it off, it's pseudo-scientific bullshit, it's the same thing, patterns of behavior in white people. We are rational. Mr. Ed said that. He began, "Emotional, just being rational, set you right." Gus doesn't know what the hell he's talking about, some, some ignorant nigger, "I wanna set you all right and tell you about white people." Uh, and hey, I'm racial, I love white people, we have more in common than the rest of you all, and invariably, when you make that distinction, it is for the purpose of white terrorism worldwide. But you should, you should, I mean, just thinking about it, once you read this, it should be obvious, you should see these patterns amongst white people all the time. Black people are dumb and ignorant and backwards, really all non-white people, but especially black people. Mr. Ed, reference him again, when he was talking about the continent of Africa. Oh my God, when you look there, look at those people, Jesus Lord, they treat each other like stepchildren. Same utama wazo at work. Uh, John Derbyshire, he says the same thing in this article here, where he's saying, "You definitely do not wanna see these Negroes in charge. They are not scientific, they're not rational, they're emotional, they're like little children. You don't want them in charge of anything. It should be us, white people, we should have white supremacy." Constant worldview, constant way of white thought. And anybody who rejects that, anybody, Dr. Welzing, for example, anybody who challenges that, pseudo-scientific bullshit. As Dr. Welzing said, "Some nigger science." I will check, I had a few other things that, like I said, I don't really just wanna be reading the whole time, so I'll check and see, uh, if you all have anything you would like to touch on, uh, let's see, I'll hit the phone line, I'll actually give out the number first, seven six zero five six nine seven six seven six, and the code is five six four nine four three pound. Uh, seven six zero five six nine seven six seven six, and the code is five six four nine four three pound. Groovy. All right. Uh, dial in if you have questions, if you have questions, comments, uh, folks have been reading, you've been reading, I hope people out there have been reading, uh, the book, 'cause people did ask for the study session, so, again, I don't want it to just be Gus reading chapters and what have you. Hopefully, we can hear from other folks, uh, you know, if there are portions of the book that they thought were constructive or important or what have you, uh, we can hear from you all as well. Caller in Brooklyn, uh, your line should be open, if you have thoughts. I think he's one of the folks that has been reading the book. Your line should be open, sir.
(noise) Greetings.
Greetings, so we can hear you.
(noise) Oh, uh, excellent, yeah, uh, yes, um, good to get, uh, um, good to hear some of that out loud, um, yeah, it's very interesting how just the whole, uh, the whole buildup, how she goes through, um, just, uh, I guess epistemology, just the way of thinking that kinda just infected everything, and it's, uh, you know, I was thinking about from yesterday's show, that, that guy, he said that he was like, um, cultural, or the cultural geographer or something, dude, he was cultural geography, just like the object, objectification of it, like turning people into like terra nullists, you know, like people are rocks, like, people are just like, like, or non-white people are just gonna be like considered part of the forest, like, they don't really have minds or anything until they become, they evolved to become like Europeans. It's just like, yeah, just all the divisions, all the little, uh, crazy, it's racist. Yeah, I can't really think of anything that I want to, I'm just kinda listening and, um...
Have you, have you been, uh, reading, um, I guess the first, or I guess we're at a hundred now, have you been reading, um, the first hundred pages or so?
Yeah.
Okay. Was it confusing? Did it make, uh, did it make sense?
Yeah, it made sense. I just like, I guess it, there's just so much in every page that by the time you get a little further down the line, and, I mean, hearing you reading from a little bit earlier in the book, I'm like, oh yeah, I kinda forgot about earlier points, I've been making some notes, but it's very, it's very rich with, uh, information.
I would agree, I would agree. And again, I, I'm just, I keep going back to that point, um, at least that's the way I remember it, we'll see as we continue reading, but I'm, I'm telling you, I think it will, it will go downhill, and what I say, what I mean by that is just it will get easier. Um, you will be a lot more comfortable, this is everybody, not just you, I think everybody, as you continue to read, for the folks out there who are going along and reading, uh, as we go, it will be much easier. You'll be so much more comfortable with the concepts and terms that she's using as you get further along in the book, it will make a lot more sense. You'll be right there, and I think it'll be, I think it'll be even easier to read more. Uh, at least that's the way it was for me the first time around. Um, you will be excited to read more because of the concepts, everything will just be easy, you'll have it down, and it'll be making, it'll be making a lot of sense. I think it'll be a lot easier as we get further into the book, so just keep that in mind. And if it's not, let me know that as well, 'cause I might be, you know, talking crazy, so if that's not you all's experience, you all can dial in and share that as well.
Yeah, it's, um, very, uh, very, it's very, very interesting, um, just the whole analysis is, is really, really glad to be reading this book, so, thank you.
Oh, for sure, for sure, for sure. Um, I can share a little bit, um, while we see if, uh, some of the other folks, if they have, uh, points, or if they have things that are not clear, if folks are listening to the program and my interpretation, some of the things that I'm adding to, uh, what I'm, what we've been reading from Dr. Ani, if what I'm saying is not clear, you can definitely call in and let us know, uh, if you've been reading on your own and you have some key points, it's so, so much information, as he said, it's so rich with material, um, I mean, it's tons, we could talk way more than two hours, uh, about, uh, the fifty pages that we've done here, so if you have other things that you think were important from this, uh, this portion of the book, you can definitely dial in with that as well. Um, this kinda touches on some of the points that we've raised already. This is on, uh, page eighty-six, eighty-six, where she's kinda tying all this together. Uh, "The concepts of nature, of reality, of quote-unquote 'the human,' and of the truth are intricately bound one to the other and inextricably entwined in the specialness or seen another way, the otherness of the European worldview. It is a particular view of nature that allows for European science, a quote-unquote 'science' which is predicated on an epistemologic, uh, epistemology, excuse me, that involves the separation of the human from itself in order to isolate and (inaudible) seemingly peculiar human ability to rationalize. Thus, as the concept of the human becomes limited, so does the concept of reality. Theodore Rosak places emphasis on Francis Bacon and Rene Descartes for this European tendency while I have begun with an emphasis on Plato. Domination remains the object." I'm saying that again just for emphasis, if you've been listening to The Cows, you know what it's about. If it involves white people, you know what it's about, and that's any area of activity, I wouldn't care if they're at the animal shelter, if they're at the G Summit Conference, if they're at the White House, if they're in Zimbabwe, uh, if they're at the Doghouse, anything involving white people, it is gonna be about white domination, white supremacy. Again, domination remains the object. Bacon never deviates from his conviction that the command over things natural, over bodies, medicine, mechanical powers, and infinite others of this kind is the one proper and ultimate end of true natural philosophy. Rosak's work critiques objectification, reductionism, alienation, and power in European thought in unparalleled fashion. What Baconian Cartesian epistemology did was to bestow high philosophical status upon that act of alienation by insisting that it provided our only reliable access to reality. Far more directly than it encouraged callous behavior, this ennobling of the alienated psychology has progressively degraded every other form of awareness human beings possess. Once we elevate such psycho- psychi- excuse me, once we elevate such a psychic mode to the highest cultural dignity, identifying it as the only intellectually productive way of addressing the universe, there will be knowledge, power, dominion without limit. We are licensed to unravel all mysteries and to remake the world, including human nature itself." Wow, and again, this is, she's quoting, uh, this is Theodore Rosak, that the two paragraphs that I just read, they were all quoting his words, but I mean, wow, and I think she's in agreement with what he's saying in terms of, uh, describing how white people function and describing how their way of thinking, how dominant. I think the lecture that I was listening to, and you can check it out, again, it's on YouTube, I think you can just do a search for, uh, Marimba Ani, if you put "on YouTube" and Yarugu, it should pop up, and I think it's, it's like, uh, it's close to two hours, it should be like a hundred fourteen minutes or something, uh, close to two hours. You can check it out, and she's, the whole two-hour session is just talking about this book. And she says, uh, the interviewer, he asks her, he says, "Uh, how have white people been so distinct from other groups of people in their ability to go out and stomp on the entire planet? How have they been able to do this? What makes them so different?" And she says, "I'm so glad you asked that question." She says that everything about what they do, their thoughts, speech, and action, everything about white European culture is about white terrorism, white supremacy, white domination, everything, all areas of people activity, all of their ideologies, all of their frameworks, all of their paradigms, everything supports white over non-white. No one else has anything like that, and that's why they have been successful, that, that is what makes them different from everybody else. Everything that they do is engineered with the purpose of, we are supposed to be dominating everybody that we say is non-white. And when you can get everybody else to pick up your paradigms, your way of thinking, which she uses the term, the white utama wazo, when you can get other people to pick up that racist think, it makes your job a thousand times easier. Uh, if you can think of Cardy Woodson, you will not have to tell black people where to go, they will do it automatically, once they have taken up your racist way of thinking, the white chip, if you wanna put it, think of it another way. I'll read a bit more. Uh, "Rosak's view of the psychic mode that makes European science possible is radically different from Eric Havelox, who praises Plato for ushering in a new modality. Indeed, it was Plato and others who followed who laid the groundwork on which Bacon and Descartes could erect their theories. Rosak speaks of Bacon and his disciples. They had found the great truth. Break faith with the environment, establish between yourself and it the alienative dichotomy called objectivity, and you will surely gain power. Then, nothing, no sense of fellowship or personal intimacy or strong belonging will bar your access to the delicate mysteries of man and nature. Nothing will inhibit your ability to manipulate and exploit. This is the same power we gain over people when we refuse to honor their claim to respect, to compassion, to love." This is the same power we gain over people when we refuse to honor their claim to respect, to compassion, to love. They become for us mere things on which we exercise power. Between ourselves and them, there is no commerce of the feelings, no exchange of sentiment or empathy." Rosak, and I'm, this is Dr. Ani's words, "Rosak has stated almost poetically what became the cutting edge of the thesis of this study, that European epistemology is symbiotically related to European imperialism. The objectification of the human and the na- and the natural allow one to treat both as 'things,' in quotes. Peoples and cultures that refuse, refuse to regard themselves and nature as spiritless are considered stupid." I'm just adding my own terms that you tend to hear, primitive, backward, undeveloped. Probably a lot of others, but these are all synonyms, uh, when you don't think like white peo- criminal often, crazy. When you do not think like racist man, racist woman, again, pseudo-scientific bullshit. This is white people through and through. I wouldn't care what field they're in, what they're doing. Uh, anyone, if you sound like you're challenging, you sound like you're rejecting the way white people want you to think, rejecting paradigms that support white domination forever. Oh, you have ventured out of bounds. I think it goes back to that premise. White people, when I was commenting on the program with Mr. Berg, uh, earlier this week, and I was saying about nineteen eighty-four, you see that same principle where the people who are operating the unjust system, they write the book that is supposed to be against the system. This is the underground book. Everybody who's upset about being mistreated, they're trying to get this book so they can learn and figure out a way to combat the unjust system. The people, the very perpetrators, the criminals who are operating the unjust system, they wrote this book. That way we can control, the people who are opposed to this, we'll control how they think. We're already gonna know what they're gonna do, cause we've programmed what they're gonna think. We set the boundaries, if you wanna think about it that way. If you and I are supposed to be working against one another and I am dictating the rules, if you wanna think of it this way, if you and I are playing a game and we're opponents, we're on opposing teams, but I make the rules for the game, I'm gonna have a huge advantage. If I'm setting the rules for the game and you're trying to beat me, and that is exactly the way white people, that's how they want things to operate. Any non-white person, you decide that you're gonna go against them, you go against their way of thinking, no, 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 no. You, there's gonna be an immediate problem. That's why I say these white people who are quote unquote anti-racist, they are some of the most dangerous, because when, and they know, non-white people are gonna get upset about this. They know what they're doing, terrorizing non-white people. They see it every day, all the time. Non-white people decide they wanna get serious and address this as a problem. Hopefully, the first names you'll hit will be Timothy Wise. That's what white people are hoping. Hopefully, some of the first names, books, articles, websites that you run across will be Timothy Wise, Dr. Peggy McIntosh, these folks, wha- anyone at the White Privilege Conference, run across these people's names so that we can control how you think about the problem of racism, white supremacy. We can control that too. That is what white domination is all about. We leave no stone unturned. We are supposed to be in charge of everything, even the anti-racist effort, counter-racist effort. We're supposed to be in charge of that too. Double checking, uh, make sure we haven't left out anybody. Six nine seven six seven six, and the code is five six four nine four three pound. Uh, hopefully, this does not mean people have not been reading. I hope people, uh, have the book, uh, have been reading important material. If you haven't, hopefully you can get a copy, library copy, purchase your own copy. You should have this in your library, very important material. Um, oh my goodness, that other, very important concept, uh, objectivity. It was in the passage that I just read about. Objectivity. Man, that was one, I had kinda come to that conclusion before I read this book the first time around, but I hadn't given it as much thought as to when I read it and how, when she describes how white people use quote unquote 'objectivity' as a weapon. Very important concept. She talks about that in great deal on the lecture that's on YouTube, that you can check it out, um, where she breaks down, there's no such thing. And I think that's one of the major premises of her book. Uh, white people, they are always operating according to the racist, terroristic agenda. Uh, when she says that white people, everything that they do is political, meaning everything that they do is tied to the agenda of white domination, everything. And so, it's not true for anyone to say that they are quote unquote 'objective.' Let's look at this objective. I mean, that's like standard, to hear white people say that, to come on and say, okay, let's, let's look at this objective. It is totally impossible, totally. And certainly, no white person ever does that. They are always speaking from the perspective of racist man, racist woman, racist child. That is, I mean, that is one of the cores about what being a white person is all about. You're constantly supposed to be functioning at all times in all areas of people activity, according to the dictates of the racist code. You never sleep on that. Wouldn't care what you're doing. Even if you're in bed with a non-white person, cowbell ring, you're still functioning according to racist code. You are never objective. And I think that's one of the big things, non-white people get confused about that. We're not objective either. I, I strongly assert that. No one is objective. I have much more respect for people who just come out and lay out what their politics are. That's why I said, John Derbyshire, I would love to have him on the program. Make it plain, hey, I'm about white supremacy. I'm down for white supremacy. Yes, we should have it. I'm a white person and we should be in charge. We should be making all the major decisions. Just make it plain what your view is. Don't come out and try to pretend that, you know, you don't really have a stake in this, you know, I'm just observing and just casting my vote here, just casting my opinion about what I see. That is not the case. And I think for non-white people, we should, you know, just be truthful about that. Dr. Ani, what I love at the very beginning of the book, I think we started here last week, uh, I think this is in the introduction, before you even get, you know, to any of the, uh, to the book. I'll read it again, just so I can remind people. But she's very clear, I am writing this with an objective. Uh, I am not impartial, uh, I am not, uh, objective, quote unquote. I am writing this as a black person, a victim of, here we go, right at the be- uh, beginning of the book, she uses the term 'bola kaha,' I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, bola kaha. And she comes down, you read the footnote, it says, 'Bola kaha is a Yoruba term, meaning, come on down, let's fight.' She's very clear about that. And she said, that is the first sentence in the introduction. "The study of this study of Europe, this book, Yarugu, this study of Europe is an intentionally aggressive polemic. It is an assault upon the European paradigm." And I hope, people who listen to The Cows, I have the exact same objective with this program. I am a victim of racism. Uh, I am coming with an objective to combat what racist man, racist woman are doing. So clearly, I have a stance about what's happening here, and I hope the politics that I have, I hope they come through in the program, because I assert, and I think she does too, I think she does a phenomenal job of explaining this. And I don't think this is something that is discussed often enough. And I certainly think the non-white people, the victims of racist man, racist woman, racist child, we do not have in mind. Uh, these white people, they are not objective. These white people, they are not coming from a position of neutrality, never. I don't care what they're doing. They're always coming with the racist, white supremacist objective as the primary thing that they're supposed to be doing and adhering to at all times. And just having that in mind, I don't think we, uh, I don't think most of us think that way. We, we tend to think that white people are, you know, they're just nice folks, they're coming through for the common good of everyone, and nothing could be further from the truth, ever, uh, if you're dealing with a white person. Uh, let's see here. Check through some of the other things that I thought were important. Great information she has in this chapter. I cannot, uh, encourage folks, read, 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 check this out, even, you know, I know P- it's a big book. I know a lot of pages, but you don't have to read the whole thing in one day. You can break it up, take it in small chunks and, uh, think about it. And I would even, I think that might be the best way to go about doing it, maybe the first time around. Just get in small chunks, so you can kinda think about it. You don't have to read a ton of pages every day, the kinda pace that we've been going thus far. You can read, you know, ten pages a day and really just go slow. You can have your highlighter, you can have a pencil, you can take some notes, uh, in the margins. Uh, you can definitely stop. I have to do it myself. I have a dictionary present. I tend to have my laptop, so I can just use the dictionary on my computer or online dictionary to make sure that I understand, uh, terms. Uh, even if I think I know what the term is, sometimes I'll still just look it up to make sure that I'm on the same page with what she's saying. Uh, just take your time. Uh, you don't have to read all five hundred and fifty pages in one day or even one week, uh, or two weeks. Take your time, go slow with it, and, uh, absorb what she's saying. I think it'll really benefit you if you're a black person, if you're really serious about understanding white people, combating what they do. Uh, this is on page eighty-nine, page eighty-nine. "Platonism," excuse me, "Platonism, Christian theology, and the chain of being cosmology all contain a conception of the human as not being at home in the natural world. They are not quote unquote 'at peace with themselves' because of the dualistic nature, the coexistence in the person of two conflicting essences, the flesh and the spirit." Lovejoy says, "The concept of the human being's place in nature generated by the chain of being idea," and she's quoting, uh, scholar, uh, Lovejoy. "Torn by conflicting desires and propensities as a member of two orders of being at once, he wavers both and is not quite at home in either. He thus has, after all, a kind of uniqueness in nature, but it is an unhappy uniqueness. He is in a sense in which no other link in the chain is, a strange hybrid monster. And if this gives him a certain pathetic sublimity, it also results in incongruities of feelings, inconsistencies of behavior, and disparities between his aspirations and his powers, which render him ridiculous." Back to Ani's words, "And when the spiritual entities are removed from the picture, as they usually are once the cosmology is constructed, what is left is a hierarchy with human beings at the top looking down over nature, their own special kingdom." Lovejoy quotes from a text of scholastic philosophy of the Middle Ages, the quote, "As man is made for the sake of God, namely that he may serve him, so is the world made for the sake of man, that it may serve him," end quote. "Once God is postulated to give the impression of spiritual priority and the feeling of intellectual satisfaction that comes to the European mind from an absolute first principle, he is eliminated and for all practical purposes, the human being becomes this God." Paige Dubois says, uh, the, she's quoting Dubois now, "It must be remembered that not only barbari- foreigners were seen by Plato to be deprived of reasoning ability, women and slaves, as well as animals, formed part of a chain which descended from the idea of the good from God. The hierarchy which Plato fixed among kinds endured for many centuries and still operates in Western white discourse about difference. The clarification of ideas of superiority and inferiority in terms of sexual, racial, and species difference is an important step in the history of Western philosophy and social relations of dominance and submission for those who follow in the tradition." The European, um, this, these are Dr. Ani's words now, "The European conception of nature, the cosmological consequence, consequences of this conception, and the place that human being has in this cosmology are all significant ingredients of the European mythoform. Herein are raised several critical ontological issues that relate to European thought, behavior, and value ideology. Europeans assume a very special place for themselves in the universe and at the same time feel uneasy in that universe. If there is anything natural in them, it is opposed to and in conflict with what is considered to be the most valuable part of them. This line of thought, and it must be kept in mind, that it is among the deepest, most conscious, i.e. reflective, as well as unconscious assumptions of European belief, has several cultural implications. First, the European ascribes to the abstraction man, priority in the universe, and throughout history of European civilization, there has been the tendency to translate this idea concretely into that of the priority of European man in the universe of men, humans. As other non-rational creatures exist to serve man, so other less rational people exist to serve white European man, and woman, of course, must serve them since they are the least rational of the Europeans. This theme is, excuse me, this theme in its more blatant forms of pejor- uh, pejoratively referred to in contempor- contemporary parlance as racist thought and characterized as an aberration of illogical minds in an effort to separate it from the best of the European tradition. But, to the contrary, such thought is normal, even understandable, and quite logical, if one accepts the givens of the European unamowazo. The argument would go something like this. The European man is the most rational of people. It is within him that the natural and pathological are best controlled. Other people are closer to beasts in the chain. The European, therefore, serves the rational plan of his God by guiding and controlling other people. American presidents always talk in terms of the American mission abroad, being that of bringing freedom to all people. Anti-American revolutionaries are always equated with barbarism. While America is seen as defending civilization, these terms and arguments are all based on the same mythoform." Uh, this, uh, started on page eighty, eighty-nine, uh, re- went over to ninety-one, top of ninety-one. And again, this book was published in nineteen ninety-four, nineteen ninety-four. Everything that I just read, particularly about that section, uh, anyone who goes against what white people want to do, uh, she was talking specifically about the area of the world known as America. Anyone who goes against that, you're anti-American, uh, you're some sort of, uh, barbaric, barbarian. Nowadays, the term I think would be, you're some sort of terrorist, some sort of savage. Uh, if you wanna think about what they did in Libya, Muammar Gaddafi, standard operating procedure for white people, and it always has been. They've been doing this forever. Uh, again, the aceli, the seed, the essence of what racist man, racist woman, racist child are all about, it is unchanging, it is unwavering. You will see the same behavior patterns, uh, amongst white people. Um, I'll give out the number again, cause like, again, I did not want these. And I will say now, this sort of thing, if it looks like people are not reading the book, don't have the book, don't have any intention of reading the book, there's, I would, uh, I would have serious thoughts about going through and, uh, doing the whole book, because I've already read this. I could do this on my own. I don't really need to invest my time in, uh, doing programs to go through the book and read. If it's not gonna be a group session where we're all participating, reading, uh, sharing our thoughts about different passages in the book, things that we understand or thought were important, things that we don't understand. If that's not happening, I would have reservations about going through this whole five hundred and fifty-page book, uh, cause as I said, I've read this before. I don't really need to do this. I could prop my feet up on my own and read this at my leisure. So, if folks out there, you haven't read, you should read, if this is something that you wanna continue. I think, super important book, as I said, this more than any other book. Uh, at the time I first read this, I hadn't read the Code book, so I didn't, uh, and she does reference Mr. Fuller. If you read this, you'll see Mr. Fuller pop up in here as well. But, uh, I didn't even know, uh, I didn't even know about. know about, or I hadn't read the code book at the time. I don't even think I'd heard Mr. Fuller at the time when I read this. So, you know, beyond a shadow of a doubt, this is the one book I would point to as being most responsible for this program being on the air, and me really being motivated. It was really, if I could compare it to anything, it would be like, reading this book was like the slap in the face. It was like that someone throwing a bucket of ice-cold water in my face and saying, "No, stop thinking, stop trying to make excuses, stop fronting like it is something other than white people. The problem is white people." That's really what this book was like. I still had white friends at the time, and I remember my frame of thinking was, you know, racism is there, but that's not the main thing. There are white people that are suffering. It's poor white people, standard argument. They are poor white people, and you know, I've met some, I have white friends, not all white people are racist. I just didn't have a correct understanding about what was happening on the planet. And this book really, I mean, literally, it was like someone grabbing me by the shoulders, a couple of smacks to the head, some water in the face, no confused victim, the problem is white people. Look closely, be honest with yourself, look at the patterns of behavior and how white people function, and even look in your own life at how white people have treated you, white people that you might call quote-unquote "friends." Didn't take much. I was honest with myself. By the time we got to the end, by the time I got to the end of the book, the number of my quote-unquote "white friends" had already begun dropping dramatically. So, I cannot impress upon listeners enough, you definitely want to invest the time. I know it's not as, I don't know, easy as sitting down and watching television for a couple of hours, but I'm telling you, you will benefit big time from reading the book. A person who dialed in from the Maryland area, your line is open. You had a question, comments?
Yes. Hey Gus, I just wanted to say thank you so much for making, you know, for setting this up, these study sessions. I have not finished the first hundred pages as yet, I'm about on page sixty-five, but I had a question about page forty-seven. Near the bottom, there is a paragraph, she says, "In the Theatus," I'm not pronouncing that right, Socrates talks about the soul perceiving, I mean, perceiving under its own power. She begins to talk about universality, universalism. I was wondering if, you know, if you could build on that, share some of your understanding on that. I'm not sure if we've made it that far yet to start getting into how she breaks down universalism.
You all will have to forgive me. I don't recall everything about what we talked about last week, so I don't know if we talked about this last week or not, but I have no problem going back and touching on it now, just in case we missed it. And even if we did, I think it's good, just to make sure people have clarity. I'm on page forty-seven now. I will, if it's all, is it seed planting?
No, sir, no, sir.
Oh, okay.
We're in the same area, though.
Okay, cool, in the game. I have no problem if it's all right with you, sir. I want to read that, just so we're all, no pun intended, we're all on the same page about what you're talking about. I'll read this and then offer my thoughts, and then if anybody else wants to comment, they can do so. Okay, I see where you, I'm on the bottom of forty-seven. In the Theatus, hope I'm saying that correctly, Socrates talks about the soul perceiving under its own power. He makes the distinction between the body and the soul or mind. Through the organs of the body, we perceive quote-unquote hardness, cold, red, etc., but with the mind, soul, we reflect, make judgments, and think about likeness, difference, things that require knowledge of the form or of being. The soul reflects with its own power, and the objects that it perceives are universal. Universality emerges as superiority and value. In the chapters which follow, the attribute, attribute, sorry, the attribute of universality will be traced along the road of European ideology, as it develops and hardens into the framework of the culture. What is it that the soul, mind, or psyche has that the body and senses do not? Clearly, it is control, and with control comes power, as in the ability to dominate. The desire, need for control and power are the most important factors in understanding the European Asele. We will see that the sensation of controlling others and of therefore having power over them is the most aesthetically, psychologically, and emotionally satisfying experience that the culture has to offer. It therefore satisfies the urma roho. It is the pursuit of these feelings and this state of being that motivates its members. The sensation of control and power is achieved in many ways in European culture, but what is significant here is that in its earliest and formative stages, Plato laid the basis for its achievement through an epistemology that rejected the poetic participation, thereby gaining independence from poetic involvement, in order to both create and to apprehend the proper object of knowledge. The object was in this way controlled by the mind that contemplated it. With this knowledge came power, because the world could begin to understand as being compromised, excuse me, because the world could begin to under, I'll read, reread that sentence, "The object was in this way controlled by the mind that contemplated it. With this knowledge came power, because the world could begin to be understood as being comprised of many such objects capable of being manipulated by the knower. The knower who was aware of himself, women didn't count, as knower and as being in complete control. The pre-Platonic man in this view was powerless, lacked self-control, and was indeed manipulated by the myriad of emotions he was made to feel by the images around him. Such is the picture that we are given." I will stop there. She does spend a significant amount of time talking about the importance of universality. Some of that comes up in the pages that we've been focused on today, fifty through a hundred, and throughout the book. It's a major theme, I would say, of the book and her work in studying white people. And I think, at least my understanding with regards to universality, one of the main tenants is that white people are the authority. We are supposed to, meaning white people, we are supposed to decide and be in charge of what is true, what is valid, and not that there can be different perspectives, different thoughts on a matter. What white people say goes, and that once you can make things so that our way of thinking, the white urma wazo, our paradigms, everyone is supposed to participate in those. Everyone is supposed to buy in and say that this, whatever they have laid down, this is the standard, this is correct, and you can even put that in quotes, this is correct for the entire planet, and anyone who deviates from this is incorrect. I think that is the way that white people use universality to further white domination. Everyone is supposed to buy into the racist thought process. Everyone is supposed to participate in this, and if you don't, you're wrong. I mean, just to make it real dichotomous, we used that term before, for us, against us. Either you're with us, or you're not. Think George Bush came out, said that very clear, his president, after the so-called nine-eleven attacks, and many white people have said that. I mean, they just make it very clear. You're with us, or you're against us. That dichotomous way of thinking, you're supposed to support this way of thinking, or whatever, behavior patterns that we're participating in, to make it common. If you want to use something, I guess, one of the more recent activities that white people have been pushing, universalizing homosexual behavior. This is something everyone is supposed to be involved in. This is not anything unique or special to us. Everyone is supposed to participate in this. And when you can make something like that universal, so that all non-white people on the planet, they leave in and participate in this and think, yes, this is, this is the standard for the planet. This is the human standard that we should all act on, works beautifully for racist man, racist woman. I don't know if that makes sense. Did you have, did you have thoughts on that that you'd like to share? Does that make sense, or have I been, I've been talking crazy?
No, no, that makes, that makes perfect sense. As a matter of fact, through reading, I've been doing a lot of reading as I go back and forth to the plantation, but as I'm reading, I get, I have a much better understanding of the Asele. But yeah, in this book, she packs so many complex concepts in each, in just a few sentences. So, you know, with a book like this, there's a lot to unpack. And I think you are absolutely right, just in mentioning, just to go through this book, it demands a complete shift of thinking, and I think you're right on point when you talk about, when you were mentioning just how this challenges that white chip. You know, that just clicked, that clicked for me.
I hadn't really, sorry, I don't have my water with you. I'll have to forgive me. Hopefully, I can make it through the broadcast and then get my water. As I said, it's been rough on the plantation. But yeah, that, I really hadn't thought about that. I certainly didn't think about that the first time I read this book, because I didn't, I was a lot more confused back then, and I didn't even have a term or concept of white chip. So, you know, it wasn't even in my thought process, but this time around, I definitely believe that is a major factor. I think I've said consistently that I think non-white people, I think non-white people, I think we are, including myself, put Gus at the top of the list, I think we have major communication deficiencies, and I think that's probably contributing to some of the comprehension issues that many black people have stated that they have when reading this material, and probably other folks too, Mr. Fuller and whomever else. But I think that white chip is probably a factor that has been underestimated. That little white guardian, I think Dr. Cambom, he says, like, we all have a little white traffic cop in our head, like, wait a minute, not supposed to be doing that. Hey, wait a minute, what are you doing over there? Put that book back down. You shouldn't even be looking at that. Stop listening to Gus or Mr. Fuller, or anybody else who is talking truth and attempting to reveal counter-racist logic. I suspect that that white chip is probably corrupting our ability to overstand what she's talking about in some of these, in some passages of the book, with some of the concepts. And I think that can be interacted just by being aware of that, and just, hey, I'm going to be open and just have in mind, some of these concepts will probably make me uncomfortable. I have been victimized. I have been brain-trashed, and I have been contaminated with racist think. So, if I note that happening, if I'm feeling uncomfortable, or feeling like, you know, what is she saying here? This contradicts, just to kind of have that in mind, if you feel like, hey, this contradicts a way that I have been taught to think. And white people have taught us all, white people have been my teachers, directly or indirectly, you know, if that's happening, just be aware of that. Maybe even take, stop, take a few seconds, you can take some notes, and write down what section, you can write down what section it is, that if it's making you uncomfortable, or if you're having some difficulty, and see if that's it, because I suspect for everybody, myself included, that could be, that could be what's happening. I found, as I said, this university, it comes up frequently, so you'll see, if you continue reading through the book, you're going to see this theme of universality over and over, because I think it's one of the main ways that white people stomp on us. They do it with everything. They do it with language, too. You got to get on the same page, literally, you got to get on the same page as us. We're not going to have black people anywhere on the continent speaking your language. You got to speak like us. You don't have to speak French, or English, or Dutch, or whatever the white people that came, Portuguese, that's what you're going to have to speak. You're going to have to be like us, universalizing everything that they do, and I mean, language, you talk about European racist think, all of their languages are coded and support racism, white supremacy. So, they do this constantly. It's, in my view, one of the major ways that they war against non-white people. This is on page ninety-eight, kind of at the end of the section where we were at, where she's big-time talking about universality. You can, I think this might be a little further than where you are, so you can let me know if this makes sense, if this coincides with where you're at on forty-seven. This is on page ninety-eight at the bottom. She says, "This is not the place to discuss in depth the worldviews of majority civilizations," meaning non-white people. "It is appropriate, however, to make some obvious observations about what African, Amerindian, and Oceanic majority thought systems have in common to the exclusion of European thought. All of the views mentioned are spiritual in nature. That is, they have spiritual bases and thereby reject rationalism and objectification as valued epistemological modes. Obviously, they have rationalistic and pragmatic aspects, but these do not dominate. These views generate an authentic cosmology, the interrelatedness of all being. They reject Aristotelian logic as the primary path to ultimate truth, while recognizing the symbolic and not the literal mode as appropriate for the expression of meaning. Most clearly, these peoples share a vision of a harmonious order achieved through balance as they seek to understand and maintain that order. We who have been educated in European societies have grown up assuming that it is only with the triumph over such worldviews that quote-unquote 'true knowledge' begins. Yet, what should strike us as students of culture is the fact that all of the world's civilizations, the European urma wazo worldview is the strangest, the minority view. It is most conspicuous in its materialism and rationalism." Max Weber calls this universalism. "By what logic does anomaly become the norm?" Obviously, with the introduction of ideology and value judgment, Weber mistook overwhelmingly successful cultural aggression for universalism. The European worldview is far superior to others mentioned in its ability to generate material accumulation, technological efficiency, and imperial thought. That does not make it universal. Fortunately, these are not the goals of all humankind, nor the definition of all cultural Aseles and other views of reality have led many to construct different models to envision the possibility of new and different functional definitions. We have already seen that African-centered theory is moving towards new definitions of sciences." I will stop, she goes more into detail about different types of science, but I think that touches on what you were talking about in terms of universality. And again, I would just say, in terms of, that's one of white people's main weapons, is making, really, white supremacy the norm, making white the norm. Yeah, did you, does that coincide? I know this is a little further along, so it might not, might not make sense, it's a little out of context, but this, does this coincide with what you were seeing on page forty-seven?
Oh, no, absolutely, absolutely. And I've, I've found repeatedly in my conversations with various different white people, this whole concept, or their kind of concept, to kind of, what's the word I'm looking for, kind of tan down a certain kind of conversation when we're having discussions about racism. They want to kind of go to this kind of lofty concept of universalism and, you know, universality. And that's always, that kind of stucked me, how do I deal with that? You know, because the question I was always in my mind was, where is that coming from? Where is that, you know, how does that apply? You know, we don't have a universal language. Everybody speaks different languages, everybody has their different customs, so where you, how does your concept of whatever you want to call universal apply to all these different people, and yet, you know, all this, you know, all this confusion and killing is taking place in the world. So, yes, this passage definitely ties in and adds more clarity. Thank you.
Making sure I'm connected, making sure- Uh, making sure I'm, I'm connected, making sure I'm connected. Okay, should be, should be getting sound. I hope nobody got, uh, cut off. I saw some folks saying they were missing sound. Should be, should be good, um, should be good. Uh, I'm gonna read, this is on page eighty-three. I think this is related to, uh, the universe, universality, um, on page eighty-three of the book. Uh, one of the things I wanted to make sure that I touched on before I got to that was just the fact that, yeah, I think that was me. I think I might've accidentally hit my, uh, mute button. Sorry about that, folks. Um, she talks consistently about spirituality and how divorcing, white people divorcing spirituality, how their entire culture being, uh, against the Creator. Uh, it is a major impediment to us having that rhythm, not just in a dance sense, but being in rhythm with each other, ourselves, the Creator, the ancestors, the planet, uh, the cosmos, being in touch with everything. Uh, be, having that spirituality disconnected disrupts your rhythm greatly. And I think white people, they do that on purpose. Uh, and I think she, a major part of what she's saying is that white people are spiritually disconnected. And so that becomes a major part of all their paradigms, to be spiritually disconnected, to be not rooted with the Creator. Uh, and so that becomes how we think. We end up thinking and behaving the same way that they do. So we become disconnected as well. Uh, she talks about that, something that needs to be corrected, uh, for non-white people, which I, I totally agree with. But again, just saying it, making sure it's in some, I wasn't heard. Uh, this is all a part of that same chapter, uh, Udomowazo, chapter one, the cultural structuring of thought. And this, this, uh, segment is, uh, desacralization of nature, despiritualization of the human. Uh, and she writes, "From the outset, let me say that in discussing these European conceptions, we will have a problem with gender terminology. First of all, it is awkward, but nonetheless important to refrain from the use of 'man' to refer to 'human' as the European has done in discourse. Second, the confusion is further complicated by the fact that when discussing the European, I will be talking about European men for the most part because Plato and those who followed in his wake ignored women and did not include them in their self-concepts of philosopher, king, or the European. And that is why they could refer to themselves collectively as European man. In one sense, we are talking about ideas that affected and were adopted by European women, children, and men. The issue then becomes complicated and the reader must indulge me as I attempt to deal with these problems generated by the European worldview." I hope that was not lost on anyone. These, uh, the European racist Asili applies to all of the white people, racist man, racist woman, racist child. Moving forward, uh, the way European, the way the European is taught to view nature and his or her proper relationship to it is particularly important because it is in part the consequences of this conception that are most distinctive nature. Wait a minute, sorry, hang on one second. "The way the European is taught to view nature and his/her proper relationship to it is particularly important because it is in part the consequences of this conception that are most distinctive of European culture. European ontology generates a conception of nature and the human and of reality. What is the implicit idea of nature and its significance that emerges from Plato's dialogues? Alvin Goldner says, "In Plato's view, ends are not resident in nature, but in the universal ideas or eternal forms which transcend nature, in which nature only imperfectly participates and apart from which it is inherently disorderly. From this standpoint, therefore, nature cannot be controlled by external influence of some regulating end or design. Elsewhere, Goldner talks about the ideas of those who were to restructure the society. On conceiving of all nature as intrinsically hostile or indifferent to mind, having, that is, an abiding disposition toward disorder, the planner's proposed changes are felt to be made and maintained only against nature, not with its cooperation. From Plato's standpoint, mind and reason, and therefore orderliness, are not in but above nature and need to master it. Nature emerges, Nate, this is, uh, I'm back to Dr. Ani's words. "Nature emerges as the world of becoming, the sensate world of lower order than being and therefore to always be controlled, conditioned, and molded in accordance with the absolute and perfect ideas that issue from the world being. And the human being in as so, uh, insofar as he is part of this imperfect nature, which only imitates but cannot be, must be controlled and molded as well. What begins to emerge is a view of nature and of the human that places them in opposition to one another by virtue of the fact that only that part of the human being which is other than nature, rational, is superior to it. This idea of basically hostile relationship between human and nature in which human seeks continually to control nature is characteristically European. It runs through European culture linearly, equal sense and collaterally or synchr- uh, synchron- synchronically in that it has both affected the course of European development and informed the collective behavior and social constructs of the culture." And I think this is readily apparent in everything that they do, uh, whether you wanna talk about cloning, uh, GMOs, dam building, which is horrific for the environment. Uh, I mean, it's, even if you wanna look at it on a childish level, uh, The Simpsons. I think when Booker T. Coleman was on the program in September of two thousand and eleven, uh, and he was talking about white people and a lot of the same things Dr. Ani touches on. I was reminded of The Simpsons episode. Back when I was confused and much younger, I saw the episode, Mr. Burns. Uh, it's a two-parter. He makes a machine to blot out the sun. Who would think of such a thing? And again, this is ran, that, even that right there is the part that's gonna come up later. White people and the mad scientist. Who would go into a lab and say, you know what? I own a power plant? I would make a lot more money if we can find a way to block out the sun. White people, the mind of racist man, racist woman, and racist child. So that anti-nature, anti-Creator aspect of white people, it is rampant. It's why we have so many of these problems. And again, it's why I laugh when I see the recycling and all that foolishness. I mean, you gotta be joking. You have got to be BP, the oil spill, uh, in the Gulf. I mean, come on. Everything about what white people do, uh, in total opposition, showing their disgust and their inability to be in balance, uh, complimentary, if you will, with other people, the Creator, nature, even themselves. I think she touches on that as well, being, uh, uncomfortable, uh, and not settled, even with themselves. Uh, and just constantly in a state of destroying, uh, disrupting things. That's the only time when they can, it seems like they have some level of, of peace and happiness, when they can be destroying things, tearing up something, blowing up something, killing people, large numbers of people. I think that's why they get so much enjoyment out of the, the murder mysteries and why all the big time films. It's gotta be about killing somebody and murder mysteries. Who doesn't? Mr. Fuller talks about that all the time. I think that's the only thing that really seems to bring them some sort of, of peace of mind, happiness, if you will. Um, there is, one of which she talks about truth. I also thought this was, uh, really important. Um, well, yeah, this is, this will be the last one. If, if folks don't have, uh, things that they would like to touch on, uh, this will be the last portion I'll touch on. Uh, we've done two hours and some change. Uh, hopefully folks are reading. Uh, I know some folks have, you know, said that they were, uh, intimidated by the book. Don't be, it's just reading, just words, that's all. Uh, again, hopefully we'll have Dr. Ani herself on the program, uh, soon. And she can, you know, we can get it directly from her. Uh, this is compens- uh, compensating for sure to have Gus on. It would be much better to hear directly from her. Uh, anyone, I think if you are feeling a little, a little lost or feeling like you would like some help, definitely check out that video. There are several, but the one that's about two hours. She really spends some time and she goes into detail about what Yorugu is all about and some of the major themes in the book. Uh, it's only two hours. You can, uh, you can listen to it on YouTube. I just downloaded it, uh, so I have it on iTunes. You can put it on your MP3 player. Uh, you can check it out, take it with you. I think it will really help you if you're feeling as though you don't really understand the concept, so you feel like you would benefit. Check that out. Um, it will really help your understanding, I think, uh, of the book. Okay. Um, this is, this is on page seventy-three, same chapter, uh, chapter one, uh, Udomowazo, cultural, the cultural structuring of thought. And again, she's been talking about how Plato, uh, along with other white folks, uh, but Plato being one of the earliest, uh, white people who really laid down the racist worldview that would come to, uh, represent some of the standards, some of the foundation of how white people were going to think, uh, about the world and how they operate in it. And really, I think also a lot of justification, uh, for why they go about doing the things that they do. Uh, but this is, uh, page seventy-three, I guess about midway, uh, through the page, uh, where she's saying that not everyone was in agreement with, uh, Plato at the time. He did have some people who challenged his views. It wasn't why they accepted he wasn't the revered figure that he is now. At that time, did have other white people, I assume, who were challenging and questioning some of the things that, uh, he was saying. Uh, and this goes to that, that concept of universality, uh, where white people push, there is one worldview. Uh, making sure I'm being heard, making sure I'm being heard. Uh, looks like I'm being heard. Somebody in the chat room said they can't hear, um, so I'm being heard there. Am I being heard? Am I being heard? Any of the folks that are listening, am I being heard? Yes, no?
I can hear you, thank you.
Oh, okay, thank you. Appreciate it, appreciate it. Okay, uh, so this is on seventy-three. Um, Plato, uh, is asserting, and like many other white people, yes, there is one world truth and it's what we say it is, right? There were people who challenged this. So, uh, these were sophists. Uh, she says, uh, "The implications that Plato's intentions may have been more than academic is strangely sacrilegious in a thoroughly secular society. Perhaps the sophists were the most effective critics of the Platonic order from those among the ancestors of the European. They apparently presented the greatest threat to his new state as they attacked it at its epistemological base. So they came out to be the worst moral villains, since immorality is equated with relativism." Lewis Richards says, "According to the philosophy of the sophists, there does not exist any objective truth, only beliefs. Man is the measure of all things, said Protagoras. There may be many contradictory opinions about the one and the same thing, and all of them equally true. The wise man is he who can change the opinions of the many through the art of persuasion. This explains how the, how they believed that they could prove the wrong logic as the right one and the right as the wrong one." And white people do this all the time. I will even read that sentence again. "The wise man," is he or two sentences, "the wise man who can change the opinions of the many through the art of persuasion. This explains how they believed that they could prove the wrong logic as the right one and the right logic as the wrong one." Back to Dr. Ani's words, "We would do well to look more closely at the writings of the sophists from an African-centered perspective. It would seem that they were dangerous because if one believed them, the painstaking arguments in the Platonic dialogues might not hold water. Things are not necessarily what they are made to appear. In contemporary Euro-American society, the skill that pays off is the one that which enables one to make aggression look like defense, oppression look like freedom, and cultural imperialism look like enlightenment. The sophists, we are told, were dangerous because they undermined the concepts of religion, family, the state, and moral behavior. But this, but isn't this what Plato had to do? Question mark. They, the sophists taught that religion was an invention of the philosophers, that gods were the creations of man and that the laws were passed by the strong for their own protection. The danger of such teachings to society was vast. The young people especially were apt to become influenced and ruined. But in fact, Platonic views were to lead to monolithic and imperial control, while sophists seemed to have had a more pluralistic view, recognizing the validity and cultural diversity and worldview. In Goldner's words, this recognition leads them to, "A critique of the conventional distinctions between Greeks and barbarians, aristocrats and plebeians, slaves and masters, viewing these as artifices contrary to nature and indeed viewing the gods themselves as men's own inventions. The diversified customs and beliefs they encounter lead some sophists to conclude that when men disagree about institutions, laws, or customs, it does not necessarily follow that some of them must be right and others wrong, and that there is not necessarily any one unvarying standard of truth by which the validity of social beliefs can be judged. Institutions and laws from this standpoint have to be evaluated in terms of differing convention, convent- conditions, excuse me." I'll read that again. "Institutions and laws from this standpoint have to be evaluated in terms of the differing conditions that prevail in different communities. Obviously, this would not do at all. The epistemological stand was in, in, this is, phew, this epistemological stand was incompatible with the Platonic objective, really the racist white supremacist objective. No wonder Plato spends so much time refuting the sophists in his dialogues. The sophist views did not yield power, did not suit the demands of the European Asili and was therefore rejected as an epistemological model. To understand the function of the abstract, absolute, or universal modality is to understand European development and its relationship to alternative patterns of development, that is, to other cultures, non-white people. An effective critique of European culture must trace its development from one critical juncture to the next, at which point the need to solidify new orders has always been met by another dogma, another ideological statement of European supremacy. This process leads towards ever more intense despiritualization and greater control. The culture that Plato has initiated is not a good one for the creative mind, nor for those who are not European. In light of this interpretation, Plato's anger toward the sophists makes more sense. They become enemies, almost the symbol of evil because of their rejection of the rational. To state explicitly that man was a measure of all things, as Protagoras said, was to undermine the new order. Of course, the Plat- Platonic view implied the same thing, but he limited it to rational man and he defined reason. Once the new measure of man had been decreed, it couldn't be changed. Well, over one thousand years later, in the same tradition, Saint Simon and others would echo Plato's edict. They would say that new society should be derived from principles of rational thought. Absolutism was a core requisite for the realization of such a state. The sophists had said that there could be many and contradictory opinions about the same thing and all of them true. What blasphemy! Worse sedition. Author Lovejoy uses the phrase metaphysical pathos in a way that seems to bring together Gregory Bateson's ethos and ethos into one idea. "A sense of the eternal gives aesthetic pleasure to the European mind," says Lovejoy. "The idea of immutability-" "The idea of immutability and pure abstractness are pleasing to the European Udomorojo." Lovejoy says of Platonic thought, "Having arrived at the conception of idea of ideas, which is a pure perfection alien to all categories of ordinary thought and in need of nothing external to itself, he forthwith finds in just this transcendent and absolute being the necessitating logical ground of the existence of this world. And if any reason for the being of sensible world was to be found, it must necessarily, or Plato, be found in the intellectual world and in the very nature of the sole self-sufficing being. The not-so-good, not to say the bad, must be apprehended as derivative from the idea of the good, as involved in the essence of perfection. The selfsame God who was the goal of all desire must also be the source of the creatures that desire it. The experiencing of the sacred and the eternal, as opposed to the profane and secular, time seems to be the essential for the human spiritual fulfillment, or at least satisfaction. But in majority non-white cultures, this experience is achieved in other ways. The power of ritual drama as a cultural mechanism capable of restructuring ordinary categories of time and space is profound, startling, and impressive, a different kind of transcendence, indeed, from the artificial construct that serves as the basis for rational thought. This is not a transcendence in which we participate existentially. Ritual drama, on the other hand, acts to transform the psyche to redefine reality for a special moment. It becomes a phenomenal reality. The European conceptual framework treats phenomena as objects and so takes away the power of experienced reality. As Norman Brown has said, secular rationalism, secular rationalism is really a religion. William James is a European philosopher who appears insane when viewed in terms of European philosophy because of his refusal to accept its longstanding tradition, his rejection of the European Udomo Wazo. James critiqued what he calls monistic idealism, or the philosophy of the absolute. He says that it is essentially non-human, neither acts nor suffers, nor loves nor hates. It has no needs, desires, or aspirations, no failures or successes, friends or enemies, victories or defeats. Absolutism, he says, dictates nothing in this life is real. The great claim of the philosophy of the absolute is that the absolute is no hypothesis but a presupposition implicated in all thinking and needing only a little effort of analysis to be seen as a logical necessity. James' own pragmatic conception of the truth is as follows. True ideas are those that we can assimilate, validate, corroborate, and verify. False ideas are those that we cannot. The truth of an idea is not a stagnant property inherent in it. Truth happens to an idea. It becomes true, is made true by events. Its verity is in fact an event, a process, the process namely of its verifying itself, its verification. Its validity is the process of its validation. Plato would not have had any patience for James' pragmatism, and neither has the European tradition. It does not fit the ideological needs of this minority culture. It does not suit the other dominant modes of the culture. It does not satisfy the power needs of the Asili. The synthetic mode yields cosmic conceptions. The European worldview has succeeded in leaving the culture with no authentic cosmology, no true metaphysic. Everything is physical, material, and separate. I will stop there. I think, or I hope, that, uh, that was clear and made sense. I think it, it touches on so many things that we talked about, but it's especially the universality. Um, she calls it that absolutism. Um, I think, uh, just what this one white person that she was saying who, uh, is dissenting from the European Udomo Wazo, uh, James, I'm just trying to get his first name, William James, uh, this person's saying that truth is, truth is demonstrated. I think, uh, I've been saying that for some time, knowledge is demonstrated. Truth is demonstrated. I think Mr. Fuller says, "Truth is that which is." Truth is experienced, and I think that is diametric, diametrically opposed to what white people want. Basically, what they want is, truth is what we say it is. If I can get my second George Orwell reference, uh, racism, white supremacy, and Orwellian thought, we say that one and three is five, and that's what it is. I don't care what you say, I don't care what your experience is, I don't care what your perspective is. We say one and three and five, you had better say one plus three is five. That is what racist man, racist woman, racist child want, and they want the entire world to co-sign on that. One plus three is five, and because the white people said so. That's what they want in terms of absolutism. We do not have space, we do not have room for other perspectives, other opinions, other people's experiences. Our experience is the norm, the standard for the entire planet. And if you don't agree with that, you're stupid, you're primitive, you're crazy, pseudoscientific I hope that was clear. Oh, you do have a hand. Uh, I will also let people know, please do not wait until the last minute, um, you know, if you all are listening in and you have comments or what have you, try to get your hands up a little bit earlier as opposed to waiting until, you know, the closeout of the program. A person on Skype with a hand up?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, in regards to the passage you read about, um, science, I've always thought that science itself was like kind of a, a religion, in a sense, in a sense of controlling and predicting things. So I thought that was really interesting in that passage you read too. And also when you were talking about time and space, uh, in terms of drama, in relating to telling a story, et cetera, I think about, you know, films, in terms of that's its true essence or true purpose of films such as Hollywood today, you know, besides propaganda, but also to confine and to restructure one's mindset for a short period of time to think a certain way. Do you, you understand what I'm trying to say?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
And also on page sixty-three, I mean, it pretty much sums up everything you, uh, stated thus far about the spirituality aspect, why, uh, Europeans don't value spirituality. It's because, like it says on page sixty-three, uh, what is unknowable for the European causes anxiety. Therefore, they have to continue to like construct spaces and delegate what one should do within that space in terms of thought, behavior, et cetera. So I thought that was really interesting too. And if one deviates from that, um, construed space or mindset, like, that's when their terrorism techniques, like their emotionalism, when they start to spill out and start stuttering, when you question them like on white supremacy, like you do with that guy Ed, like his anxiety starts to spill out, and they don't know how to confine it, don't know how to control it, they don't know how to, I guess, rationalize it because it's unsettling for them. So that's something I have noticed.
Hmm, uh, that makes, to me anyway, that makes a lot of sense. And I think too, for non-white people to keep in mind, so much of racism, white supremacy, I mean, this is said over and over again, just really marinate on what that means for the world in which we live. If the major weapon that racist man, racist woman, racist child utilize is deception, that means so much of what white people are doing is bogus.
Correct.
When you are questioning and you're starting to say, hey, wait a minute, I'm not just gonna take this on the value of you saying it, just 'cause you're a white person and I'm just supposed to, okay, you said it, that's gotta be what it is. When you start to question, white people gotta know, I think Mr. Fuller, that was, for me, one of the more profound things that he shared when he said, "White people do not lie to themselves." Uh, where other people have asserted that white people lie to themselves and they believe their own lies. You cannot be a master deceiver and believe your own lie. They know that they're lying. They know that they're saying all this crazy stuff to us, incorrect and untrue stuff to us. When you start to question, that's when you see white people get flustered, and that's generally when you see them start to get really angry, like dang, this is not supposed to be going this way, they're not supposed to be questioning me, I'm white, they're just supposed to take it, I'm white and I said it, that's that. It's not supposed to be, wait a minute, I don't think one and three is four, let's add this up. We really invest, that, that, no, 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 it's not supposed to go that way. And I think that's when you start to see white people, pseudoscientific bullshit. The name, that's when they get tacky, trifling, terroristic, really that's when they're about to sock you if you're, you know, in armsleeve, like they're about to go to work, uh, at that point. The deception is not working, you know what number two is, violence. So yeah, that makes perfect sense to me.
Yeah, because on page sixty-three, it says that the European psyche needs the illusion of rationally ordered universe in which everything can be known. Like, remember like back in the old days when, say, a overseer or say under segregation, a white man would say, you know, "Don't sass me, girl," or, uh, "Don't question me, boy, you do as I say," kind of a thing? 'Cause once you question whatever deception they want to spew from their mouth, um, it causes anxiety.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And since the European psyche needs the illusion of ras, you know, needs the illusion of a rationally ordered universe, that illusion, well, to help create that illusion is linked to, at the very bottom, the bottom, it says, that illusion of superiority of European culture for its members and therefore fits the Asili, their Asili, meaning their true essence, I guess you could say, or their main objective globally, you know?
Hmm, absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, I, I, I totally agree. I'm looking on page sixty-three now for any of the folks who, uh, are listening in, page sixty-three. Um, yeah, it's saying a lot of what Call just laid out. Um, yeah, I, I agree with that completely, it makes total sense, total sense. Hmm.
And it says here in the middle of sixty-three, uh, uh, it says, "Like a battle of gods," in parentheses, but we're gonna begin with, "Science predicts, it prepares Europeans for the future. It is through science that they seek to relieve their anxiety by gaining control over what controls them." Um, what bugs me out is the fact that, according to the book, if Europeans don't know what the unknowable is, meaning anything on the metaphysical realm or the spiritual realm, they try to control it, but how can they control something they don't know? You, you, or try to control something they don't know? Or even, why try to control something you don't know or you completely negate that exists?
I feel like I see white people doing, and you can let me know if this makes sense or if this is online with what you're saying, I feel like I observe white people doing this. Um, when it's black people doing things, that, Carter G. Woodson, okay, I'll use this example, I'm remembering when Dr. Yomu Mutegi was on the program, uh, the second time around. And we were talking about, um, not Carter G. Woodson, sorry, George Washington Carver, Dr. George Washington Carver, sorry. Uh, he was talking about him and he was saying that, you know, he is, uh, I think he was saying that he is his favorite scientist. And he was saying, he was listing all the things that, uh, Dr. Carver did. And he was saying that, we were talking about the plants, like him talking to the plants and do you think, do you think that's true? Do you think he really did that? And Dr. Mutegi, he was saying, uh, who am I to question him? Uh, he was like, he said he did it, you know, who am I to say that he was lying? I mean, he was coming up with all of this information and he was doing all this stuff that white people of that time couldn't do, uh, who am I to say that, you know, maybe he was able to do it? And he said that white people ridiculed him, uh, and called pseudoscientific bullshit, same thing, white people ridiculed him and made fun of him, and they still do it. I still, I see white people on sites like Chimpout and, uh, the overt, you know, racist sites, they still do it. And he said that there were other white people who recognized, I mean, how could you not? He was solving problems and coming up with all this incredible information, and he was saying that other white people, I think, uh, Ford, Ford Motors, the car company, wanted him to come and work at their company, this is all on his second visit, you can go back and listen in the archives. He was saying he wanted him to come and work at their company, and Dr. Carver's like, nah, I don't wanna do that, and so they ended up moving a company like right down the road from where Dr. Carver worked at, so that they could be close and go get his, his insight and his expertise and what have you. So I think, I see that frequently where white people, where they are around black people who are in tune, right, have that spiritual nature that white people are not connected with, where they're around non-white people who have that, and they don't understand it, they can't control it, they can't relate, so they, they will either find ways to ridicule, undermine it, destroy it, or they'll find ways where they can just totally take it over, one of the two. I feel like I see, I mean, excuse me, I feel like I see white people do that sort of thing all the time. Um, does that make sense?
Yes, I, I would, I will flip what you said. Uh, the first thing they would do is try to get close to you to acquire the knowledge, and if they can't acquire, acquire the knowledge to apply it for themselves, then they'll ridicule it, demonize it, et cetera.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, mm-hmm. I was, jazz music, I feel like I see them doing that sort of thing all the time, all the time. Um, that's another one, rhythm, um, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I think that's an important point too, to see if they can come in and steal whatever it is that you're doing. Uh, if we can come in and, and figure it out, steal it, copy it, imitate it, and then we'll just, or if we can't do that, we'll just lie. They'll just always revert to deception. We'll just lie and take it, we'll kill you or wait till you die and then just take it over and say that we did it, uh, and take it over it and, and imitate it, that sort of thing. I think, yeah, that's pretty standard operating procedure, uh, for white people worldwide. Um, things that they don't understand or things that they can't duplicate that non-white people, the majority of people on the planet are engaged in.
And then another funny thing too, to coincide with the, with, um, Mr. and Mrs. Ani's, um, explanation of, "In their worldview that science predicts," that also ties into the economic Wall Street factor as well. 'Cause if you really, like, if you watch Bloomberg or CNBC or just watching this whole economic meltdown, everyone, every pundit or expert, and that's another example, being an expert, 'cause they wanna be able to predict things, they try to predict how the currency's gonna go, how this is gonna go, and how's that gonna go. So I think science and how the economic factor also plays a lot into this need to control, need to predict things, need to have a, you know, rational order universe in which they can function their Asili in, at all times.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. I think that the, uh, predicting factor, I think that factor, or I think that corresponds nicely with, uh, the time aspect that Dr. Ani touches on and saying how they're always focused on the future, um, and white people, uh, allegedly flexing their knowledge, uh, and their grasp of things by being focused on the future, we're predicting what's gonna happen and prognosticating, and even, a lot of white people get paid for doing that.
Right.
Sitting around and acting like they can, they can tell you what's gonna happen financially or politically or whatever, whatever area that they claim expertise. Um, yeah, I think, I think even, I was almost thinking that white people have made themselves synonymous with scientist and expert. I think the Boondocks, I'm not excited for the new season, but I think they do have a great joke in season one where there's a white guy and he's talking about something, and, uh, they ask, well, you know, what are your credentials? How do you know this? And he says, "I'm white, I'm an expert." Like, uh, and I think they're making a joke, they pretty much made themselves synonymous with expert, authority, scientist.
Right, right. And the thing that too, another thing too, I, um, like, since they lack spirituality, why is there such a huge, hmm, I guess, uh, this wasn't my question, why is there such why is there such a huge, hmm, I guess, uh, this wasn't my question, why is there such a, an importance by Westerners in terms of, like, psychic ability, like, why they have, like, these psychic shows or tarot card reading kind of a thing? If they don't believe in metaphysically, uh, metaphysics, you, you, do you understand what I'm trying to get at here? Or you can say the whole interest in psychics also is linked to the predictor factor, I don't know which one it is.
Hmm.
Because I don't know.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry about that. I don't know if you can say psychic, psychics are somewhat spiritual, I know some are, some are not, but, well, then again, you have to be, I don't know, it, it makes me wonder, like, if you're a psychic, you have to be in tune to something to read, you know, someone's hand or whatever, but if they can do that, how come they don't have this spiritual connection to either nature or human beings? They're always, you know, demonizing that aspect of life.
Hmm. Uh, I think, I'm just, and I think this is in Dr. Anee's text where she, like, the whole myth, the Dogon myth of, of Yorugu, right? Uh, this incomplete being and he leaves, uh, and he's not complete, he doesn't have the female complementary part of his being. And he recognizes that, right, after he's left and he tries to go back and get it, but it's too late, it's already gone and so he's just destructive and incomplete forever. I, it might be, I could be wrong, but I, it might be, uh, that with the white Aceli, that they understand that they do not have that spiritual connection that non-white people seem to have, or at least non-white people before they get contaminated by racist thinking, that white chip. Uh, and that even perhaps maybe it's at a really deep subconscious level that they have, uh, that same way that their color envy, maybe they have an envy for not having that connection that non-white people seem to have, uh, whether it's connecting to, um, the spiritual wel- spiritual realm, uh, or the ancestors. I'm actually, I was thinking about the film Ghost, uh, talking about films and how they can have such an impact. I think that film got an Academy Award. I think, uh, Whoopi Goldberg got nominated for an Academy Award, where she plays a black female who allegedly has that connection even though they're ridiculing her. They're making fun of her, they make her seem like a criminal, I mean, it's standard racism, but there seems to be some, I mean, she got nominated for an Academy Award. Uh, there seems to be at the same time, the disrespect and the terrorism, but there's also a reverence, uh, that she does have that connection to the spiritual well that they don't have and that they need this black person to get in touch with that, that they respect that power so much that they wanna use this black person to get that connection, to get that information that they don't have, that they can't control. And I know Ms., uh, Ms. Zanelli in the UK, she's talked about this, she thinks white people are doing that, like, for real, like, not just in films, but using black people that do have that strong spiritual connection, using them to access that energy, to use it for racism, white supremacy. I don't know, does that make, does that make sense?
It does make sense and I also wonder if, if your point is, can also be tied into why they're choosing non-white people to mate with and have sex with? Because sex in it, sex in itself is not just a, uh, uh, what you call this, a physical, uh, lustful pleasure activity, it too is essentially a spiritual realm. So, I wonder if that also ties into why they choose to sleep or marry or date non-white people, to have that energy that, or, that energy that they envy that they know they lack.
Hmm, that makes sense, that makes sense, that makes sense. I would say a lot of the stuff that they do, the listening to black people's music, uh, I think music is definitely a spiritual thing, rhythm, rhythm helps your time at meeting.
Yes.
Um, a lot of the stuff that they do, um, even the sun tanning, I think, uh, the sun has a lot of spiritual properties as well. I think that has been worshiped as a deity, uh, by many people, uh, on the planet, even that, I think, might have some spiritual, I think, I can tell you from the past week, I spent a lot of time out in the sun, you do get energy from the sun, uh, activating that melanin for non-white people, uh, I think there's definitely an energy transfer there. I think that's photosynthesis, I'm sure, is not just, you know, the plants are developing, embalting from all that, I'm sure that there's some spiritual energy, some spiritual transfer going there as well. So, I'm sure a lot of the things that white people do to compensate for not being connected, uh, could be trying to get at that spiritual side, that deeper, uh, side that she talks about, it's not just the surface, uh, level, it's not just the sexual act, it's not just the, the sunbathing, it's not just the hearing the music, there's a deeper, deeper meaning going on. So, yeah, it could be the case for all of the things that they do that seem to be compensatory.
Yeah, at the same time, while they're trying to connect with that, they pervert it in the same breath, it's just ridiculous.
Mm-hmm, yes, ma- yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm listening, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that's all I wanted to say.
Hmm, absolutely, absolutely. I think, I would just caution, sorry, I told you I don't have my water, you have to forgive me. Um, I would caution, uh, non-white people who are listening to the program, uh, because I know sometimes we will get off, I think Pam said this before, how she is cautious about, sorry, she is cautious about playing up how white people envy us, right? Because we are in a system of domination and they do stomp on us and I think that's why. Just gotta keep in mind, even if they are around to envy whatever that black person is doing, uh, as I said, with, uh, Dr. George Washington Carver, or whomever, if they say that they really admire what this person is doing, Jimi Hendrix, I think the same thing happened there, music again, spiritual, I think, definitely. Um, but they are, they're gonna build you up to tear you down, as I said, I spoke with Neely Fuller Jr. earlier this week and that was one of his main points. Uh, if black people haven't observed that pattern by now, you had better get it in your mind. If you see white people coming around to help you out, if you're a black person or to pat you on the back and act like they really have some regard for what it is you're doing, you had better expect the hammer to come down soon in the near future, because they build things up to tear them down, especially if it's non-white people. So, yeah, I would just expect that, exactly as the caller said, uh, even if there's some reverence, or if it appears to be, they're pretending that they have some regard, or maybe they even do, you know, as I said, it might be at a deep subconscious level, maybe they do have some regard for what it is that you're doing and, and spiritual connection or whatever. Believe the degradation is going to accompany that. It's, in fact, I would say if they have some authentic reverence, that's probably gonna further motivate them to terrorize you, because it'll upset them, that'll further have that imbalance, that this nigger has some talent or something that I perceive to be of value and I don't have it and I'm angry about that, so I'm gonna make sure that I mess them up. That wasn't the word I wanted to use, but, uh, there, I mean, I just, I see it with Michael Jackson, whomever, any black person, if you can believe, if they have some regard, if they really have some genuine appreciation, even if they don't tell you for what it is that you're doing, you can be sure they are coming to mess you up and take it. And then, once you're dead, then they'll come around and cry and maybe talk about how great you were and how talented and all that and the whole, now, after you're dead, they probably killed you, poisoned you, whatever the case may be, but absolutely, absolutely.
And it's funny that you mentioned the word envy, because in my experience, when I'm around white people, instead of giving you a compliment, they say, oh my God, I envy you, you envy you and insert in the blank, I envy you, insert in the blank, depending on if anyone else experiences. And I, I thought that was very interesting that you brought up the word envy.
Hmm.
And when I do hear those people say that to me, I quickly move away, quickly. I don't come near them, and, and when you watch their eyes after they make that comment, it's like they're, they're studying you, like, trying to, like, dissect you, you know, from afar, it's just the most bizarre thing ever. And I've come across that plenty of times, yet I, it wasn't that, yet knowing what they were doing, it's not like I was like, oh, you know, I wasn't qualified at the time, no, I was qualified at the time, but just watching their behavior and just the facial expressions, like, turning and the line across their head, you know, you know, forming, it just shows you how, like, they're so meticulous at dissecting you and trying to figure out why you have whatever it is that they're attracted to, but they don't have it, back to what you said. And I also experienced that on the job as well too, with a particular guy who'd come up to me and say, you know, oh, I really do admire you, you know, you're such, this, this, that and the third, your character is X, Y, Z, I knew, I knew exactly what's gonna happen, like, okay, he wants to know something, he's trying to extract information from me, you know, what does he really want? And come to find out, yes, he did throw me under the bus, however, I then canceled him out by throwing him under the bus and I called him on it in his face, when this particular white guy did not get the position he aspired to within the company I was working with, I was working in at the time. And, uh, he was embarrassed, he turned, his face turned red and all different colors and he held his head down and walked out the, the company. I said, yes, I was aware that you threw me under the bus, now karma reigns supreme all the time, you get what you, you, what you put out is what you get back in return. And I smiled at him and said, have a good night. But I was real calm, no yelling, quote-unquote, not getting emotional as, as white people like to throw that around, you know, especially at black people, saying, oh, why are you getting so emotional? Nothing like that, I was cool as a cucumber and he never, ever looked at me the same way again, nor did he come around me again.
Wow, hmm. I strongly suspect a lot of black people listening to the program, non-white people period, can relate. I think, uh, the one, well, the female member anyway, um, with the deactivate the white chip project, when she was on, excuse me, uh, and she was saying a similar thing, she's not black, but she's non-white, uh, so-called Indian, and she was saying, when she does her dancing, that she gets that same feel, I think she used the same term envy, uh, from, and she said, especially with white women, uh, she says she gets that same feeling from them, uh, where they will come and be envious of the clothing and the dance and the rhythm and trying to imitate it as much as possible and, and they can't quite get it, they just don't have it quite the same, uh, as the non-white people, uh, so-called Indians, uh, who participate in the dancing and what have you. And she was, it sounds very similar, uh, to what you explained. Um, I sus- and I suspect a lot of folks listening can relate. Um, if you all want a quick, quick anecdote, um, when I first moved to California, uh, back when I was super confused, I was working, uh, there was a white female, uh, we were working at the same job, uh, with, uh, quote-unquote, severely emotionally disturbed children, like sixty percent of them non-white, mostly black children. And we were taking the C-Best, the folks in California, the test you have to take if you're gonna be a substitute teacher, right? And so, we were gonna take this test and her mom, white woman, obviously, uh, was like, yeah, you also take it, be a, uh, employment opportunity, you can make some money on the side, you get paid like a hundred some dollars, uh, a day, you know, if you're ever in employment situation, bam, you have your C-Best, or even if you just wanna make some side money, I mean, a hundred fifty dollars, hey, what's that for one day? You go in, you work eight hours, great job. So, the white woman that I'm working with, we're going to take this test, she's saying, uh, oh, I'm gonna totally beat you, total European Udomo Wazo, uh, European Aceli, it's a competition, we're not thinking, we're in this together and blah, blah, and I mean, it's just a C-Best, who cares? Just go take it, you pass, whoop-de-doo, no, this is a, this is a contest, we're competing against one another, a race, if you will. I'm totally gonna beat you, I'm gonna dog you out on this, blah, blah, blah. And I'm just like, whatever, let's just go take the test and get it over with. We go take the test and they mail the results back, I think, like, six weeks later. So, we get the results and we open them up and she's, what did you get, what did you get, I betcha I beat you down. She did not beat me, Gus got a better score. Man, if you could see, and again, I didn't even care, I'm not even thinking on all this, I'm not, who are we competing with? Me thinking, I'm not in a race, I'm not competing with anybody. Man, she was furious and this came out in such a subtle way, I was so confused back then, but it just struck me as odd why she was behaving like this. We went out later, we're at a party, right? People are drinking, having a good time, this has nothing to do with the C-Best results. She's talking to this guy that we just met and saying, yeah, we took the, uh, the C-Best and, uh, he got a better score than me, but I mean, he took all this time and I finished way before he did and he was all super serious about it and I was just trying to go and take the test and I had to sit around and wait for him to leave, because we drove and I'm just like, wow, that is really, uh, I don't even know what to say, like, you know, this seems to have a lot more significance for you than it did for me. Uh, and, you know, like I said, her bragging, boasting that she was gonna beat me down, I'm smarter than you and I'm gonna dog you out on the test, very rev- and again, I suspect a lot of people listening have very similar experiences with white people. I think it is their nature, the, the Udomo Wazo of white folks, as Dr. Anee says. Um, Jeb, caller, anything else?
Yes, one more example to, uh, ducktail with what you said in terms of competition, just something simple as me walking, uh, like, you know, the fast pace in New York City, just walking, trying to get through the turnstile, trying to get through the door, they're, like, if, if I'm, like, walking to the turnstile, trying to exit and there's, like, a white guy or a white woman next to me, they're doing their damnedest to cut me, cut, cut, like, cut in front of me to get through the turnstile first before I do. Or getting, just getting into the train when the door is open, they do their damnedest to get, cut you off so they can be first. So, I picked up on this, so every time I sensed that energy that they're competing, walking with me to the turnstile, I immediately speed up faster, walk faster and I cut them off. And I also do the same thing when I'm exiting or entering a store, I do my damnedest to never let them get ahead of me first. And that's something I also noticed in terms of your, your story with competition.
Funny, wow, that is funny. Little things, you can have a lot of fun on the plantation, once you have a better understanding of white people, uh, just go into the grocery store, make sure you cut a white person off if you're going to get in line, you can have a lot of fun, uh, on the plantation, being attentive to white people. Um, and they expect that sort of thing, they expect you to, to let them go first or what ha- or just being in competition, as you said, and not knowing that just, I'm gonna beat that non-white person and get in line before them or go through the turnstile before them. Lots of things to be aware of on the plantation, if you're having contact with white people, just little things to keep in mind, they are, as I, I think as she said in the book, it's always about domination, their objective, doesn't matter what it is, they are always thinking dominate non-white people, I'm white, that means something, I'm supposed to be in charge, I'm supposed to be first, we're supposed to be supreme at all times, doesn't matter what it is, supreme all the time and forever. Even if we're getting in line at the grocery store, I'm supposed to be first, I'm white. Um, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you so much, I'll let someone else call, call in and ask questions.
Groovy, good hearing from you, thank you for the, uh, for the insights, I think a lot of folks in the chat room can relate. Um, oh, boy, man, oh, man, uh, it has been a long week on the plantation, uh, we will be back tomorrow with the compensatory call-in. Um, we, uh, should be devoting some time to news stories, as I said, I wanna kinda make it a trend of kinda spending the first twenty, twenty-five minutes just catching up on news stories from the past seven days. Um, I think that's important, I think a lot of folks, myself included, when I was more confused especially, um, don't often keep up with, uh, news events, uh, newspaper or just things that are happening on the planet, so I wanna try and make that a, a pattern to take the first twenty, twenty-five minutes or so to just kinda play some of the standout, uh, news clips, uh, from the past seven days, make it current so that it's not just rehashing stuff from months ago or what have you, but these are things that happened last twenty-four hours, forty-eight hours on the plantation. So, uh, if you're tuning in at the very beginning, that'll be the news clips, then if you all wanna comment on any of that, um, then, once that's concluded, uh, then we can, you know, go in and chat. I hope that, uh, the caller, uh, he rang in on the broadcast on Wednesday, I think, maybe it was Thursday, earlier this week, he called in, I think Shadow, that was his handle. Um, he was saying that he had a family member, I don't remember the relationship, but he had a family member and he said that he had talked to her, he was trying to give constructive information, counter racist logic and she was not receptive at first, I think she was doing the typical victimization, you know, you're crazy, I don't wanna hear that, get away. Uh, and she unfortunately got in a tragic arrangement, eek. Um, but, the but, uh, she changed her mind, she ca- she came to understand, "Oh, he was giving me lifesaving information, you were correct, he had given her just some things to look out for, uh, some of the racist behavior patterns, and bang, they turned up." He worked at a restaurant, and I think he came on and made some sort of racist joke, and, uh-oh, this is what he said, dang, am I in bed with a racist? And she started to see the light, and, uh, yeah, he said that she is, she is dissolving that relationship, and she's getting much clearer, so I'm hoping that he will dial in, cause I think that is phenomenal, if we have any non-white people who have success stories, where they have been able to give constructive information to non-white people, and it resulted in that person changing their behavior for the better, that would be great, and it would be great to have details, like, really codify what you did, what you said, what worked, so that that could be replicated, because there's, there's a tremendous need for a lot of that, and I think a lot of listeners have confused people that they share DNA with, AKA family members, that they would like to get them up to speed with regards to what's happening on the planet, so that they can make, uh, better choices, uh, so, anyone, if you got success stories, and when I say success, just, you know, you've been able to give lifesaving information to other non-white people, they don't have to be family members, but other non-white people, and, uh, they changed their behavior for the better, let us know, that would be great to share for the program, I hope that caller will participate on Saturday, but yeah, we'll be doing that, um, news updates, uh, and if anybody has feedback, we don't have to, but I just, you know, if you have feedback, if you heard, uh, the broadcast on Reality Unknown, and, uh, the white people who participated, Mr. Ed, Mr. Kevin, we can devote some time to that as well, cause I do think, uh, those were, it's always interesting to analyze the conduct of racist man, racist woman, so, we can, we can do that, uh, we can do that as well, uh, on the program tomorrow, but that'll be nine PM Eastern, uh, six PM Pacific tomorrow evening, uh, we should be back on Sunday as well with, uh, Juris DeBries, uh, he'll be joining us live from New Zealand, uh, Monday, we should have two programs, Pam will be here Monday evening, uh, discussing anti-blackness, uh, this will be our second broadcast on anti-blackness, important pro, uh, in, important topic, uh, and then, uh, we should have two programs Monday, the reschedule, we had a broadcast this past Thursday, they got moved, uh, I'm not surprised, Mr. Berg, uh, if you simulcast the program tomorrow, you should, uh, participate and let us know the fallout of any mistreatment that you have encountered since the broadcast, I, I would be very interested in hearing about that, I'm sure some of the listeners would as well, um, but yeah, we should have two programs on Monday, um, the first one, the reschedule, um, Makode Linde, that's his name, uh, the black male who is reported to have made the racist cake, uh, in Sweden, uh, he was supposed to be with us this, earlier this week, we rescheduled, should be Sun, uh, Monday afternoon, sorry about that, Monday afternoon, Monday, May twenty-first, uh, he'll be visiting with us. Uh, again, I had no interest in this program, I wanna be very clear about that, I'll be repeating that the next two, three days, I had no interest in having him on the program, the only reason that this is happening is because several listeners said they would like to hear what he has to say, and to talk to this, uh, victim. Uh, he does have a white parent, and it's also reported that he's homosexual, quote-unquote, so, you just should know that going. Be prepared, he is a victim, but know that going, all that upfront, so you know what to expect, uh, when he comes on the program, but I hope people are able to listen in live, so that they can ask questions, whatever it is that you wanted to know from this victim, uh, so you all can take advantage. Gus was not interested in this program, but it should be Monday afternoon, three PM Eastern, twelve noon Pacific, I know that's a lot earlier, but, I mean, it's the time difference, he is in Sweden, uh, but it should be going down Monday afternoon. Uh, that said, uh, thank you, everybody, for participating, I hope it was constructive, and I hope people are reading the book, if you don't have the book, uh, make an effort to get a copy if you can, uh, check out the library, too, if you don't have the finances, uh, check out the local libraries, many of them, particularly if you are in an area that has a major college or university, they should have a copy, uh, go to the library and try to get it, uh, read it, should be, uh, a benefit, I think you'll learn a lot in reading it, and next week, it'll be pages one hundred through one fifty, it'll be chapter two on religion, so anybody out there upset about white Jesus, next Friday evening, eight PM Eastern, five PM Pacific. Uh, on that note, we'll wrap things up, uh, thank you, major thanks, uh, this is the, uh, the super disgruntled victims of white supremacy, as I said, it has been unpleasant week, unpleasant month, really, um, just not in good spirits, and, uh, super pitiful resources, we had a victim who did step up, I made my request about someone being able to, uh, take over compensating Mr. Scotty Reed, uh, to have the program accessible on Black Talk Radio Network, uh, he's compensated for broadcasting, simulcasting, really, uh, the program over there, and, uh, Three Oh Four was able to take care of that, so, super thanks, I, I hope the, the program is worthy of the investment, um, yeah, cause it definitely, I know, most folks, if not all, non-white people do not have funds to waste, so, that, those finances definitely could've went to something else, or someone else, someone else's counter-racist efforts, so I hope the program is worthy of the, uh, investment, uh, and that folks, uh, appreciate it. Uh, you can check out her blog, innerstandingbusiness.wordpress.com, innerstandingbusiness.wordpress.com. Groovin'. Uh, we will be back tomorrow, um, thank you all for participating, I hope it was a constructive investment of your Friday evening, uh, tune in tomorrow, compensatory call-in, no spectators, no spectators, definitely need folks participating, doing something, even if you don't think what Gus and the gang are doing is constructive, gotta be doing something, uh, doing a blog, uh, program, documentary film, writing a book, gotta be doing something, we can't be having non-white people who get constructive information and just sit on it, that's not gonna work, cause white people definitely do not sit on their information or resources, they put it to work, they put it to use, so we gotta do the same, cannot have spectators, uh, we got too much of that, gotta be active, uh, find a way that you can do something, if you can figure out a need, go get to it. Uh, we'll be back tomorrow, hopefully people will invest if they think the program is constructive, definitely appreciate the support, uh, and also letting other listeners know, that's funny, also letting other non-white people know, uh, if you think they would benefit from listening to the program, uh, share, 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 uh, put it on your social networks, uh, you can send out links to the program, and we're on Ice, uh, we're on iTunes, make sure I remind people, I think everything is back up, we're on Black Talk Radio, but we're also on iTunes, uh, I know a lot of people out have their iPads and all that stuff, uh, you can just go to iTunes, uh, you go to the iTunes Store, and just do a search, there's a little search box at the top right corner, you can put in white supremacy, you can put in, uh, Dr. Frances Gress Welzyn, you can put in, uh, Neely Fuller Jr., names of people who've been on the program, racism, any of that stuff, uh, you can just do a search, you can even put the cows in, you know, make it easy, and when you do your search, filter the results by just clicking on podcast, or if you look on the left side of the page, once you do your search, and you get the results, look on the left side of the page, uh, on iTunes window, and just filter the results by podcast, and you should see the icon for the cows, click on that, and you should see the archives for the program, there actually should be several podcasts of, uh, the cow, thank you, innerstanding i- uh, isness, uh, just put the link in, where you can access it, uh, that one should have, I think, the most recent, um, I don't know, most recent three hundred prog, uh, programs, if you need any of the older ones, you'll see a separate link for, uh, one of the other, uh, iTunes podcasts that has, like, the first four hundred fifty, or first, might be a little bit more than that program, so if you need older programs in the archives, but yeah, we are on iTunes, and that should be super easy, I know everybody knows how to use iTunes, to get, Lil Wayne, and Jay-Z, or what have you, so if you need counter-racist material, iTunes can hook you up as well. Uh, we will be back tomorrow, thanks again, everybody, for tuning in, and, uh, Three Oh Four, much obliged, much obliged, uh, contacted white supremacy, signing out, replace white supremacy with justice as soon as possible, it is time, has been time, man, long overdue, deal with these white people, establish justice, cows signing out.